I'm going to call the Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Esau Meadow Planning Board to meeting. Like to first this order businesses. If there's anyone here who is recording the meeting, please state your name. And the method in which you're recording the meeting. So I'll ask one more time. If there's anyone in the audience who might be recording the meeting. Please state your name and the method you're recording the meeting. Hearing none, I'm going to call the role. So in attendance is Pete Punderson on Zoom. Bill Fonseca. Cassie Chair Swallow, myself, Russell Denver, and Sir Turell. So Rob Turell. And we're joined by Nina Fazio from the Department of Planning and Community Development. And before I go anything further on that, so unfortunately, but also fortunately. This is the last meeting that need to be here with the Esau Meadow Planning Board. She has accepted another position in the private industry. I want to tell you that she has been an outstanding.
Thank you.
Partner to work with for the years that you've been with the department. And I think we owe you a real order of gratitude.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So the first business is the approval of the December fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, open session minutes. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the December twenty, December fifth, twenty twenty-three open session minutes.
So the second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Epstein.
Mr. Fonseca.
Hi.
Mr. Chair Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Turell.
Right.
And I'm an I as well. So the first order of business. Mr. Turell.
All right. Case A N R dash two thousand twenty-three dash oh eight, request by applicant for uh for endorsement of plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law. The purpose of conveyance of parcel C one at a point five three acre lot from three twelve Parker Street. Assessors parcel ID seventy-five dash five dash zero located in the residence AA zoning district to thirty-one Rollins Drive assessors parcel ID seventy-five dash forty-one dash eight located in the residence AA zoning district, resulting in the creation of a new lot C, a one point six two lot, eight uh acre lot located in the residence AA. And for the reconfiguration of three twelve Parker Street assessors parcel ID seventy-five dash five dash zero located in the residence AA zoning district. And three two two Parker Street assessors parcel ID seventy-five dash six dash zero located in our residence A zoning district, resulting in the creation of a new lot B, a point nine two acre lot located in the residence AA zoning district and new lot A. A point five nine acre lot located in the residence A zoning district applicant Dominic Nardi. Three twelve Parker Street Esau Meadow Mass zero one zero two eight. There will be a quiz on that later.
Well, that may take longer than the whole hearing. Um, maybe. So yeah, it's just a basically a lot line reconfiguration between three different parcels. Transferring some year rounds. Conform with frontage and stuff within their zone.
So I'm going to ask this question, and I don't know if my memory is serving me correctly or not. But wasn't there a proposal to rezone certain lots for Dr. Nardi? And how does this play into?
So uh he did apply uh for a zone change and did not get it. Um, so he has changed course um in his action and he's shifting some property lines. Uh, his daughter is one of the abutters who's going to be getting some additional property. So that's his end game is just making sure everything conforms, but shifting the most property that he can to two in a butter.
So this, this has no zone change associated?
Zone changes, no nothing. Everything conforms with the zone in which they're in.
Yeah, okay. Questions in the board? Mr. Punderson, any questions?
Uh, so it conforms to AA or just A?
Uh, each lot, the lots in double A conform to double A standards, the lot this in in residence A conforms to residence A standards.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions? So can I have a motion to endorse?
I move.
Hold on. Go ahead.
I move to endorse the plan of land at three twelve Parker Street, three twenty-two Parker Street and thirty-one Rollins Drive as one not requiring approval under the subdivision control law.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Is there a script tonight in there?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
I didn't catch what you said. Is there a script? Oh, okay. All right. A motion made in second. Any further discussion? So on the endorsement of the plan by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Chair Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Turell.
Right.
And I'm an I as well.
Right.
Thank you. So we are going to enter into a series of public hearings. Might be a little redundant, uh, but um what we're going to do is call out each number, each member we will do a roll call for. I will ask the clerk, Mr. Turell, to then read the public hearing notice. We'll ask the applicant to present the application to the board. We'll get a report from the uh planning and community, community development staff. The board will ask questions and then I'll open it to the public. So that sounds longer than it'll probably take. So the first public hearing will be case S P twenty twenty-three dash zero eight. Members present are Mr. Punderson, Mr. Fonseco, Ms. Chair Swallow, Mr. Turell, and myself, Russell Denver. So would you please call? The application.
Uh, case S P dash two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight requests for amendment of a special permit granted to Mess LLC DBA East Village Tavern, a restaurant at fifty-three fifty-five North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID twenty-six dash one forty-eight dash zero located in the business zoning district applicants John and Joseph Sullivan, twenty-three Spring House Road, Hamden Mass, oh one oh six.
Kelly.
All right. Well, thank you.
Present. My left, your right is John Sullivan, uh owner, one of the two owners, and to my far left is Matt Deserol, who's the current manager.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, what are you proposed to be doing here?
There's two different items in front of you. I'll take them. The first one is the uh the patio. The patio is the existing patio that's been there since COVID. As you know, during COVID rules, the uh A B C C, your board, uh all the boards were given lax requirements and the state kind of took over a little bit and said, if you wanted to set up outdoor eating and drinking, they fairly lose parameters and you could set it up and and go forward. They've been given multiple extensions, uh, the entire state has. And uh those extensions are coming to an end if they haven't already. I think they end like this basically now. And so the next spring period where you could be outside, you would need to come back and actually apply as though you'd never had it before. Um, so that's what we're doing. This is the existing patio that's already there. Seats about forty people. Um, no one is allowed out there after ten P M. Um, it's something that uh even after COVID, they found has been a big call for people uh in the area. People like to eat outside. People that are still have some COVID, uh, you know, uneasiness like to eat outside. So it does cater to a certain group of people and on a nice night, it is nice to sit outside and eat and uh it's gives them a another competitive balance against the the other uh restaurants in the area, Western Mass that have this um outdoor eating ability. So we want to keep that, and that's why we're here. So that's the amendment to the special permit. We really won't see any change to what's already there. I mean, I think since the new owners took over, they put some more plantings up there and made it more aesthetically nice, but it's essentially the same patio that's been there since twenty twenty. So that's the first part.
Right. Second thing?
Second thing is adding, um allowing them to have more than three musicians acting as once as background music. This is primarily for three different reasons or three different um musical acts that go up there on a regular basis, um semi-regular. Number one, St. Patrick's Day. Um, when they first got in there, they sought a special amendment, a special one day meet uh permit to allow them to have the mummers. The mummers are a group out of uh Philadelphia. They have more than three. They probably have, I don't know how many people.
Peter Finn bus like forty.
Yeah, there's like forty of them one time. It's more than three. Let's put it that way. Um, and they do a bus trip around Western Massachusetts and they stop at various bars, you know, the Ford all around Western Mass before they march in the oil parade. This year, East Village was one of those stops. We'd like to continue that. Also, they'll probably have some other people around St. Patrick's Day weekend. They typically get a little uh get some musicians for the night before Thanksgiving. And also on Thursday nights, they have what's called the Irish sessions. These are people that are not paid performers. Uh, they come in um and they play different wind pipes and play different folk music, Irish folk music. Um, they're not paid performers. They're actually customers. Uh, they sit there, they have a beer, maybe an appetizer, and they play their different wind pipes in the background. And you know, there's no set amount of people that typically come up there, but it's usually more than three. It's a group of men that kind of go to different locations around Western Massachusetts and do that. So it's essentially for that, uh, so they can continue to do that. They have no interest in being in nightclub. I understand that when you look at this, your first thought is they're going to have Bon Jovi in there. Um, this is going to be, you know, uh, this is going to be a concert hall. Uh, we hope that they're goodwill and that they're the the business they've run and the time they've in a year or so they've been up there shows you they have no interest in um in being in nightclub. What they want to be exactly what they are. Um, which is a tavern that serves uh good food and has a extensive menu and is a good place you can go to have a drink, but also to eat. And it's a family friendly place. That's what they are, is what they want to be. And they think this is a good compliment for that. This um will not really expand their crowd. In fact, when they do these types of things, the mummers pack the place. That's that's an unusual situation. We will give you that. But typically, if they were to have someone set up, it'd actually have to move a couple of tables around in there because it is kind of tight in there. So they actually lose seating when they, depending on how many people they have set up. Usually, usually it's ten to fifteen people right before Thanksgiving or on St. Patrick's Day or on Parade Day, which in this case will be the same day. But the 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 Irish sessions are just customers who sit down in their own seats. Um, they're not paid performers. They're just customers. So that's the reason for uh request number two.
Any concerns from the town?
Um, so you asked about the COVID outdoor dining that is extended until April um first twenty twenty-four. Um, and then you had some discussions with our town manager.
Yeah, um, and we received some correspondence from the building department.
Um, the.
So you've seen them?
I have, yeah.
So can we just read those into the record?
Building and the fire?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So comments from building commissioner David Gardner regarding case S P twenty twenty-three oh eight East Village Tavern. The temporary outdoor dining deck covers five parking spaces based on the number of parking spaces available prior to constructing the temporary deck. The facility's maximum allowable occupant load is ninety-eight. Whereas the additional seating provided by the deck should have increased the requirement for additional onsite parking, none apparently was created. Well, this may have been considered okay for the purpose of providing temporary outdoor dining opportunities due to the COVID pandemic. If the deck is to remain, the permanent loss of the five parking spaces needs to be addressed. If the same onsite parking analysis that was used to determine the current occupant load of ninety-eight is applied, the total indoor and outdoor maximum allowable occupant load for the premises would be reduced by fifteen. These are comments from our fire prevention officer. The fire department is concerned that allowing the applicant case S P twenty twenty-three dash oh eight to increase the number of musicians would change the venue from a restaurant with background music to a nightclub with food, live music and dancing. This would potentially cause overcrowding above the approved number of occupants. Um, two suggestions. If capacity were permitted over a hundred occupants, a fire sprinkler system would be required. If the background music changes to a music for dancing and the occupancy capacity stays below a hundred, an enhanced fire system alarm would be required. The new alarm system would trigger shutting off the power to the band and turning on the lights.
Do you want to respond to those?
Certainly. I'll start first with uh the parking issue. Um, again, uh, this is something that's been there for three years and they haven't had any issues parking. I just want to point out the obvious. And I know this, it's unusual that you come here with something that's already existing and say, please let me keep doing it. Most of the proposals that come in front of you obviously come in because they're brand new proposals and these rules have applications for some good reasons, but I think this is one where you have to take a look at common sense approach and say it's been there for three years and they've never had any problems with parking. However, having said that.
Oh, so I want you to take in consideration.
Yep.
I live four tenths of a mile from there. I'm by there all the time. I see the cars parking the dental and pedestrians cross the street. So there has been an increase because it didn't use to be that way with the former. Because they didn't have that type of business, that a successful business.
They have been more successful.
Yeah.
At our last meeting where they were in front of us as well, do you remember that there was a comment from someone in the public that said their customers were parking at the bank?
Hmm, I do. Yeah.
Do you remember?
Okay.
What I do have, um, it's not, it's not part of the proposal because I just saw the letter. So then we responded and and the folks, but I do have, just to kind of point out the area. A lot of people already park in those lots that we've we've noted. So um the five parking spots that uh that the building uh notes that would be taken up by that temporary and hopefully permanent deck um is more than offset by the existing parts. It's sorry, up there. People already park in those spaces. So the the spacing configuration, I think, is based on what the owners. I don't know, maybe a decade ago came in and probably applied for. We're certainly willing to have that. Take another look at that and have those spaces looked at to make sure those are appropriate under your, whatever your parking guidelines are. But I just wanted you to know as a practical matter, people do park there as a regular basis in in the areas that I've marked, is what I'm referring to.
And how about the fire department's recommendation and the building inspector?
Uh, I have the fire departments, the building inspector.
Zoning enforcement officer.
Maybe I don't have that one. I have.
That was the first letter that in about the five parking.
Gardner?
Yes.
That's the, yeah, so that's the one I'm talking about on the parking. So the 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 fire, I have that one in front of me as well. That's. So um we don't want to be over a hundred um for obvious reasons. Um, they have no interest in being over a hundred, uh, because that would mandate they have to be sprinkled. They don't want to do that. Um, and I I I think without getting, without taking that to our position, it could potentially be a violation of their lease as well. Um, so they don't want to, they don't want to do that. They don't own the building. As a matter of fact, Mr. Farnock does, and whether it gets sprinkled or not would be up to him really enough down. So they don't want to have to run into that problem. That would be extremely costly. Uh, when they do have that type of entertainment, it does take up a a room there. So it's not as though they're just adding um some band and or some people and then, you know, they can crowd it in like that. I mean, the the area, um, if it's the mummers, whoever it is, not the Thursday night people, but night before Thanksgiving and those types of entertainment would be, you know, would take up a significant space. Will they have to move out table space for about ten, twelve or thirteen tabletops? What they normally would have if you went there tonight. So I think that actually reduces the capacity. When you put in two or three people uh doing some light music in the background, you'd have to take out enough tables to to reduce the capacity by ten or twelve. They have no interest in going over uh ninety-eight, zero interest. It would be um extremely detrimental to their business model. So there's that. And what we're asking for, um we're willing to make any amend, you know, any reasonable accommodation that you might to just make sure that our words have meaning, you know, do something to put something on the special permit that you think is appropriate, that would make sure that what I'm telling you is enforceable.
Yeah.
Um, so so we couldn't have Bon Jovi, whoever show up there, the Rolling Stones show up there next Saturday. Um, we're really what we're looking to do is exactly what we told you. Yes, there will be an increased entertainment around St. Patrick's Day weekend. Absolutely. Night before Thanksgiving, absolutely. But other than that, it's, there's really nothing that they're looking to do that they don't already do. In fact, the people that go up there on Thursday night are already going up there. So I just want to make sure that is not illegal.
So that kind of begs the question then, if it's very sporadic and only occasional and you, did I hear you say you went and got an entertainment license from the town council for the mummers?
For the mummers, yes.
So, so instead of going once, you go twice or three times a year rather than building it into the special permit. What's, what's the difference there?
The only issue is our concern about the 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 people on their uh Thursday nights, uh, the gentlemen that come in and play their wind pipes. Um, again, they're not paid performers or customers. Um, I I think it could be read that there's more than three entertainers up there. So I'm willing. They'll certainly keep going for the mummers and 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 get their special permits, uh, and special amendments for that, special one day permits for that. That's fine. They don't probably doing that. They just want to make sure that what they're doing does not run a follow-up through bylaws.
So is it?
They're asking is uh a fairly uh benign use uh for that reason.
So is there a definition of entertain entertainer, not necessarily in our bylaws, but in the A B C C regulations? So if you, if you just had customers versus paid entertainers, I mean, does that solve your issue?
We hope so, but we're but we're here to make sure that uh we're not running a follow your bylaws. If you tell us that it does not run a follow your bylaws, then they'll continue to do it. What they don't want to do is come up here, get denied and continue to do that. They want to, they have a good relationship with the town, with all the departments. They want to continue that good relationship with the town and all departments.
And you understand why we're asking all these questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So I'm going to now open it to the public. So if you could vacate your seats.
Yeah.
Could all three of you sign your names, please?
So I am open, opening this to the public for anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter. When you please come forward, recognize, sign in the sign in uh sheet, state your name and address. Because we do have people on Zoom. Might be talking or might be watching. Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this? Just while you're signing your name, just one more question. So what are you doing about the people who are parking in the dental lot and crossing?
Uh, customers would advise not to park there.
But they do.
Can't control that. Um, we do our best to tell everybody to park inside the parking lot. You know, come over and I mean, I'm talking to the doctor all the time. Um, we go over there, we clean the parking lot, but it's not even our trash.
Yeah.
I mean, I I watch people litter all the time over there. So that was his main concern when we first came in there. And I mean, we sent each other pictures back and forth.
Okay.
It's uh it's just people walking by or even his customers, you know, littering over there. But we're just being friendly neighbors and we clean it every night.
Just concerned about the safety crossing North Main on a Friday night, Thursday night, something like that. Yeah. Okay. Hi.
How are you?
Good.
How are you? Good. Um, I am Nicholas Torcia. I own a local business here, uh locally run here in Esau Meadow. Um, average, uh, very average goer of um Nathan Bill's design, uh, also with the tavern near in town. Um, the issues that were brought up um concerning the patio, concerning the parking, um, and you know, allowing those bigger bands to play. Um, speaking from resident standpoint, I would fully be on board with. Um, I do. You you know, I can understand obviously the issues of, you know, this and that, but it's it's the establishment is safe. Um, it's clean. The service is good. The food's phenomenal. Um, it's really a place that my personal opinion, I don't think would ever get out of hand. Every time I've been in there, there's never been an issue. Um, you know, I have noticed, I know the concern of the crossing. Um, there's always an Esau Meadow police officer uh uh across the Rockies. Um, and the way, you know, our police force here is in town. I think they enforce and do their job as they should. Um, as far as the trash, you know, um, trash that is across the street and Mr. Tremboli's office is is not trash from East Village. Um, it's multicolored cups that aren't sold there from my knowledge. Um, so, you know, like I said, speaking from a resident's standpoint, uh, I I I think it's something that, you know, should be looked at, but not too in depth to the point where, you know. Option.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to be heard on this matter?
Yeah, come and not speak.
Yes, my question is, why did you refer this to the planning board?
Yeah. Because this is a planning board issue, actually. Um, Ralph Page, one thirty-seven Pease Road. Um, I am.
You start, I I'd like to applaud you for coming and speaking to this board and letting the board know what your personal thoughts are on this. Unlike other people, I think we greatly appreciate your expertise and knowledge in planning matters because of your experience with the town. Thank you.
Um, and with that said, I am speaking as a resident in town. Um, I am a lifelong resident. Um, I also have um background knowledge based on the fact that I was the chairman of the planning board. I was a member for five years. Um, I do have some concerns. I do know uh the deck was allowed during COVID. That was not something that the town initiated. That was through the state. The town had no say on it because it was during COVID. Um, I do have concerns with the size of it. Um, and having to reduce the capacity inside in order to allow seating outside because there is a certain number of parking spaces. Um, as anyone in town is aware that that parking lot is small. Um, they do make up for some of it by parking on the grass area so that there's more spaces, which believe it or not, it works. Um, the less people you can keep from crossing the street, the better off you are. Um, it may be something where they look to actually try and increase the parking lot a little bit based on that. I don't know what the setbacks are or anything. Um, part of my concern is to go towards the entertainment. Um, this is a restaurant. And very rarely do you have a restaurant that has bands like Seven Roads come in. I will quote from Seven Roads website. It was not East Village. We are going to rock East Long Meadow like no one else. You don't hear that very often when it comes to a restaurant that you're going to rock the town. Um, the thought process was a three person band as quiet background music during dinner works at a restaurant. Um, music that's so loud that you can't talk to the person across from you while you're eating. It's not what I consider restaurant music. Again, I'm single. There, there's other people that think, hey, that's the best way to eat. Um, but I do have concerns and I have concerns, especially if any of the windows end up opening the back door because the sound travels and the neighbors on Brook Street. For some reason, it's really strange. Noise bounces off of that stream in the back and it amplifies it going to them. East Village has done a wonderful job. They put up the fence. It's really, really helped. So I I would be more apt to think of like the mummers. When they came in front of us, we said, yeah, this is a one-time deal. I don't have an issue with it. Um, Thanksgiving, the day before, I wouldn't have an issue with that. Having it on a weekly basis, I would have concerns over it. Um, and that's just, like I said, myself. And I do drive by there all the time. I am thrilled that, I mean, I came on the way here, I came by and the parking lot was two thirds full. It's good. It's good that a local business has a lot of people going to it. Um, you know, we don't want them to go out of business. You want as many people in there as possible. But you also have to consider neighbors and respect the whole area. Um, I wasn't able to look at the plans for the deck. Did they have sizing and all on that deck? I I'm sure at some point.
Yeah, in the narrative. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I was told the deck was roughly eight feet wide. That's accurate.
What's the size? I believe it's twenty by forty.
That's a big.
Twenty by forty-four.
That's, there's a lot of possibility for seating out there. And it it's not seating, it's standing, which will increase the size quite a bit. And again, I'm not saying I'm against it. I'm just saying I respect the board to analyze the whole situation before any decisions are made.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience like to be heard on this matter? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay. So there have been a couple of issues raised that I think we need some answers to. So I don't know if you can supply them right now, but if you want to come forward. So, um, so I specifically would like you to look um for a definition of entertainer. Okay?
Absolutely.
So I'm quite familiar with the Irish Cultural Center and they and they do weekly.
Sessions.
Sessions.
That's them.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know all the particulars of their liquor, their license and how that operates, but um it would be interesting to see you know, what you want to try to do with that, with your Irish session is considered entertainment if everyone is just um unpaid. So I think that's one thing that they take a look at. I would like, these are suggestions by me. Um, I'd like you to um come with a a definitive parking plan so that we can address the issue of the additional seating. And if it's going to take up additional parking, where are you going to make it up and how will it play within our parking parameters? I think that's an appropriate thing to do. I'm sure I'm not the only one with.
We I I we didn't have it tonight because I just got the letter.
No, that's fine.
So that's why I couldn't find.
That's fine.
No time to do that.
And I think we have some time because we know the state. Um, you know, the state approval of outside dining won't end until April first. And I think Mr. Torcia's son has connection or Mr. Torcia's brother has connections to the governor and we might find out whether it might get extended even further. Um, so you know, we can look into that, but you know, I'm, I thought there would be residents from Brook Street or from Elm, and I know that you've worked very hard.
Our regular customers now.
Yeah, but you've worked. But I also know that you've worked very, very hard and what Ralph said about you've been attentive to the needs. I understand all that.
Just real quick, um, the windows prior were open garage door windows. And that's where, um, Craft 32 and families got all the complaints with the neighbors with the beans and everything to bouncing off. I mean, they would have open windows with no screens in them. Um, that solved that problem. Um, we are in touch with text messages, calls, everything with almost every single neighbor behind us. Um, we have not had any complaints and, uh, if they do, I mean.
And I should have mentioned, in addition to the, the deck closing at 10:00 PM, there will not be a bar or entertainment on the deck, just so you know that.
Right. Because it's at 10 o'clock also too is that, um, that we don't serve customers standing up. We don't cocktail serve. There's no bar out there. You have to be seated by hostess in order to, um, to reserve dining.
So thank you for telling us that. So those are things that we can also build into the special permit.
Yeah.
So.
And we have seen.
You, you kind of committed to that, so we'll, we'll make sure that's there.
The outdoor patio seating chart is for 20, but I mean, we have families that are quite large, that six to eight or a group of teachers after they got out of school or, or somebody, um, they come, we can make tables bigger. So I mean, we, we have it so we could see additional larger reservations.
So I, you know, besides looking at, you know, what the definition of entertainers is and the parking, I think I just want you to spend a little time with the building inspector who is the zoning enforcement officer to go over the plan. So that, uh, the next time you come in, that we will have something from him indicating that, yeah, you know, he met with you, everything is fine. You know, as drafted, I think it then gives us some, some, um, assurance that if we make the decision that he's fine with everything, the way it's all laid out. So.
Absolutely.
Uh, did members of the board have any? So, um.
I do, Russ.
Okay, thanks.
I'm not sure I've ever approved a parking plan. It didn't, uh, have all the parking spaces on the property. I don't know if we have shared parking. You know, in other words, the bank and across the street at those offices, I think, I think the parking spaces have to be on the property.
Yeah, I, I think you're right. Yeah.
Yep. Yep. So the building inspectors are gonna have to look at a definitive plan. They're gonna have to live by that. It's, it's the same way with every other restaurant in town. I happen to love this restaurant. I really like it, but parking is a problem. I mean, I know they've, they've put the fence up back, up, out back and all that stuff, which is fantastic, but I don't think we're supposed to park in the bank's parking lot and across the street in any restaurant.
So we'll get a definitive answer from the, from the building inspector that it is indeed part of the property. So that there's not that reliance on other, because I agree with you, you know.
I just want to get.
Allen, do you have an easement or a license with the owner of the bank and then the kind of office building adjacent?
I mean, um, I talked to them. We use their account. Um, same with the plane, I could.
Yeah, but do you have something formal? So that when they are not in operation.
A written agreement.
Yeah, written agreement.
Flow parking can.
We can look into that.
Yeah, I think that would be, I think that would help certainly.
I think it's needed.
Okay. So how much time do you, so I think our next meeting is January 2nd.
January 2nd, January 16th.
January 2nd, January 16th. I, I think you want to avoid the 16th. So, um, yeah, at all cost.
Yeah. Like, I mean, I think we've got time to deal with this.
Yeah.
Do you feel? Can I get back to your clerk, uh, maybe around then and maybe set something up for when your February meetings are? Have you set the February meetings yet?
So if you turn around and you look at the woman directly behind you.
Okay.
It's the town manager and deputy town manager. And you can reach out to both of them.
Okay.
So I think for the sake of a public hearing, it needs to be continued to a date in time.
Yeah, so that's what I'm, I'm thinking. So maybe our first meeting in February.
Okay, sure.
Which is.
Next.
The sixth.
First Tuesday of February.
At, um, we have to give a time, so six o'clock.
Okay.
That doesn't mean you'll be the first on the agenda.
Okay.
Six o'clock.
Let's just block it off.
So do I have a motion to continue this public hearing until February 6th at 6:00 PM?
Uh, yeah, make a motion to continue the public hearing to, what did we say?
February 6th at 2024 at 6:00 PM.
February 26, 2024, 6:00 PM and the Pleasant View Senior Center.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the continuance? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, next item please.
Uh, okay, uh, case site, 2023-05, request for site plan, uh, review approval for the construction of a nonprofit educational corporation allowable under MGL, uh, 40A, section 3 at Benton Drive. Susser's parcel ID 10-9-2A located in the industrial garden park zoning district, applicant MPT development LLC for industrial drive, South Hadley Mass, 10075.
Then again, the planning board members, uh, in attendance for this public hearing are Mr. Punderson, Mr. Fonseca, Mr. Chair Swallow, Mr. Terrell and myself, Russell. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Members, for the record, my name, forgive me, my name is Kevin Grindel. Budget manager with Barton and La Judas representing the applicant, applicant being MPT development LLC this evening. For this application on Benton Drive, uh, for the reference, it's parcel 10-9-2A. Uh, immediately north, about 600 feet north on Benton from the Denzler Road intersection. Uh, immediately across on the western side of Benton, across the street from the Benton Professional Park. Uh, site location is on the plan set that was submitted to the town. Um, by reference, the parcel is approximately two acres and what we're looking to do this evening is uh, via the site plan application process, um, depict the improvements for a just under 12,000 square feet, uh, 11,800 square feet and the associated parking and site improvements for that development, for that proposed building. So recognizing by way of the history on this parcel, there was a, uh, application for zoning determination approved by staff dated September 5th. And that, uh, will be a nonprofit educational use and be a healthcare facility. Uh, that healthcare residence facility and that facility will be operated by the Center for Human Development, be it CHD. So, uh, what we've also looked at is, uh, by way of possibility of future use. Uh, we've looked at this site development, uh, also for business use, uh, within uh, within this zone, uh, zone being the industrial garden park. So looked at the other approved uses within that zone. Uh, making sure both the building and parking configuration would be suitable for future uses as well. So by means of this conversation, I will, I will interchange the, uh, current proposed use that CHD is, uh, is anticipating on the site. Uh, along with, uh, future accommodations for, uh, for the site. So the site development.
Uh, I'm just gonna interject, ask a question on that. What is the lease proposal for the building? With CHD? Cause you keep referencing future use. So.
The, the, the use here before us tonight would be, uh, by, with CHD.
Yeah. Educational use.
Exactly right. That educational use. Um, the future use is really just, uh, my and our awareness that in the future we want to make sure that what we're proposing this evening, uh, would be compatible with the future approvable uses. Uh, there is nothing, uh, nothing on the table at this point for any, uh, any determined uh, future use really. Uh, that is by way of the stormwater management plan and as well as the parking plan for the, for the site. We just want to make sure there was enough parking for a future business use if at such time this was transitioned. Um, making sure that we were looking at the site holistically. Making sure the stormwater improvements, utility improvements and parking on site would also be, uh, would also accommodate a business use in the overall building, that 11,800 square foot building. So if that, that is it, there is nothing, uh, nothing determined in the future.
But my question is really beyond the scope of the site plan review, but I'm gonna ask it again. What's the initial term of the lease with CHD?
The initial term of the use, uh, term of the lease would just that they will be operating, uh, the facility uh, with MPT development as currently as the applicant and owner of the, uh, of the property.
And so you're not gonna give me a term, the initial term, five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years?
Still, still negotiation.
Okay.
There's, there's not, not a term.
That's an answer.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
So the overall description, again, by means western side Benton, across from the industrial park or professional park. Um, what we're looking at on the site, public plan in front of you. Uh, the darker green, the majority of the site is grass, is vegetated. Lighter green is the stormwater management areas. I'll get to those in a moment. Um, recognizing the overall parking areas on the front and south page down on the site. Uh, and the three-sided, uh, building in the middle of the page of that maroon color. That maroon color, uh, also represents the rendering here before you is what you would see from the street. Uh, from the Benton Drive aspect of the site. Um, the cutout in the middle of this, of the building is a enclosed, uh, outdoor space. Uh, that's three-sided by buildings and, and gated access to the rear. So that's a small courtyard area within the, uh, the inside of the building. Um, plan left, the rear of the building, uh, rear of the property, uh, there is existing vegetation, existing tree line in the back. Um, this site is, as you see it today, is a cleared lot. So, uh, we're not proposing any significant vegetative clearing, no tree clearing. What you see back there is effectively the existing, existing tree line. So working within the existing clearing on the site. So the overall site, again, that's, uh, 58 parking spaces as shown. Um, and that goes through the application as far as the parking table on the plant. Um, there would be 59 parking spaces required. Uh, we are showing 58 with long loading spot. So in future, uh, business use, there would be enough parking for this, uh, for this square footage of the building. Um, you will also see the landscape improvements on the site, be it both street trees and foundation plantings that are consistent with your, uh, with the, uh, with the regulations. Um, that those areas, both street trees and interior parking, uh, excuse me, interior landscaping, parking features uh, shown on the landscape and lighting plan, again, filed, uh, filed with the application. You do see lights mounted, both building mounted, parking lot lights and bollards to the rear. And consistent with regs. The drainage, you do see again, like I said, a lighter green color, both front of the building and plan, uh, plan, uh, bottom on the south side. Uh, what we're looking to do there would be consistent with the storm management standards. Clients for the 10 items within the regulations that we're, uh, that we're targeting. That there's cheap flow off the parking lot, uh, into shallow sediment four bays. And then from those four bays, it would be overtopping into larger, uh, infiltration basins. Um, we're taking advantage of an existing site that is very flat with very good soils. Soils, I'm talking infiltrations, 80 and 100 feet thick. So I can, uh, very rarely present the fact that no water leaves the site as it's existing. Thereby, it was very easy for us to say that there's no increase in the overall stormwater discharge. Uh, thereby taking advantage of those infiltration rates on those basins and discharging everything, uh, to those basins and there will be infiltrating on site. So again, that stormwater management report does show slight decreases. Recognizing there's no, no ultimate discharge into the street as it's shown today. Existing sites, less than 1% crossflow, which we're, uh, which we're effectively, we're maintaining uh, with this configuration as far as keeping everything on site. Um, and again, that stormwater management report has been submitted and reviewed by town staff. So also shown on the plan, utilities, recognizing on Benton Drive, we have public water, sewer, uh, electric. Everything there is shown in the plan on the, uh, utility plan as submitted. Uh, we're connecting into the water booth, fire and domestic service. Uh, plan bottom right is where the existing sewer main is, uh, we're connecting into that sewer main, uh, with comments back from the water and sewer administrator. There will be minor, uh, minor revisions to that plan. Uh, depict on the plan and adding some details for clarification, but um, that, that connection is shown, uh, we're confident in. So those utilities, I go through the lighting, I did go landscaping, did go through the drainage. There's also a traffic assessment that was submitted as part of this, as part of this application. Recognizing a very low trip generation based upon the use. Um, by low, I'm talking eight new trips in the AM peak and 10 new trips in the PM peak. Um, the conclusion of our traffic engineer, again, low tip generator and minimal traffic impacts. Um, that's for the intended use today. We also analyzed future business use. Once again, low, yeah, as far as an office space, um, low trip gen and once again, minimal traffic impacts. Site distances on Benton Drive are fantastic, uh, and reviewed the, um, historic crash data. Again, all the crashes that were recorded within this area, I say all, I, what I mean, say nine out of the 11 that were, that were recorded in the past three years. Well, the intersection of Benton and Denzler, nothing was in front of our site. And that's also within the traffic assessment report that was, uh, that was submitted. So with that being said, understanding you've got a long list of public hearings behind you, I will make my presentation brief and obviously uh, myself and others here in the audience are here for any questions, uh, after you get through the public hearing, uh, portion of this.
Thank you. Any questions before he leaves? Nope. Pete, any questions?
No, I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any letters from town officials on this matter?
Um, no comment from police, no comment from fire. Um, some comments from deputy superintendent. Um, do you want them read into the record?
Please.
Um, from my firm and deputy superintendent, amend the stormwater management report to include exhibit B, town of East Long Meadow Stormwater Management Inspection Checklist and provide final hard copy to the DPW. Applicant to obtain all necessary permits, including but not limited to the stormwater permit and trench permit from the DPW after project approval and prior to the commencement of construction. And applicant to submit and sign illicit discharge statement prior to discharge of stormwater to post-construction BMPs.
Just so the people in the audience who might want to know what a site plan is, is when a site plan comes before it, what this planning board has available to them is to see whether, you know, you mentioned stormwater and traffic and, you know, the setbacks and so forth. Uh, the use has been determined to be allowed within that zone. So there's very there is some discretion on what this board can do, but, uh, the fact that it's been determined that it is an allowed use within that zone does limit our abilities on, on decision-making. So.
All right. Just one comment. I would just say, um, to make you aware, just be cautious that there's potentially a project directly across the street that's going to be happening shortly that we approved a few meetings ago. So if they're both doing construction, that may cause a little bit of chaos there. So be conscious of that.
Understood. Thank you. Okay. So this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience that would like to be heard on this matter, please come forward and state your name. I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who would like to be heard on this matter? Please come forward and state your name. Hearing none. So I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
So I have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. So on the motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So it comes back to this board. I have a motion.
I just have a couple of comments.
Okay.
Um, it's industrial garden park that's being built up. I think we should expect a little construction confusion. I don't think the project has any bad things about it. It seems to be completely in line with everything and, um, that, those are my comments. I see nothing wrong with this.
And CHD is well-known for providing superior care for their clients and I think, uh.
I used to sell them oil back when they started.
Yeah, yeah.
Way back when, about 30 years ago.
Right. So, um, if someone wishes to make a motion, could we incorporate the comments from the building department? So all of those, you know, it's incumbent upon them meeting the conditions that the building inspector has laid out in his report to the planning board. Someone wish to make a motion?
DPW. I'll make the motion for approval based upon the conditions that have just been presented with the, with the, uh, building department.
Uh, building, uh, Board of Public Works.
Board of Public Works.
Department of Public Works. Thank you.
DPW.
I'll, I'll second.
All right. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Next item. Next item.
All right, uh, case SD dash D dash two thousand twenty-three dash oh one. Request for definitive subdivision approval for Oakwood Estates Scarlet Drive, a thirteen lot residence subdivision at three six two Parker Street. Three six eight Parker Street, Fernwood Drive and Rear Fernwood Drive. Such as partial IDs seventy-five dash eleven oh one dash zero sixty-two dash thirty-one A and B. Five dash ten dash one A sixty-three dash twenty-six dash zero. Located in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Veretta Construction LLC, here of Mr. Thomas Albredda, thirty-two Eastwood Drive, Wilbraham, Mass. Zero one zero nine five.
So the planning board members in attendance for this specific hearing are Mr. Punderson, Mr. Fonseca. Mr. Chair Swallow, myself, Russell Denver, and Mr. Terrell. And just for some history on this, so there, the applicant before the planning board a number of months ago. For a preliminary approval of subdivision, there were of. There were many questions that were asked. Um, and so, uh, they were required to go back and meet with various town officials and or make changes to the plans. And they are back in front of us for a definitive approval, so I will turn it over to the applicant. Please state your name and sign in.
Uh, good evening for the record, I'm Rob Levek from R. Levek Associates here this evening representing Tom Bretta to my left. Um, we are again, as you had mentioned here for Scarlet Drive or Oakwood Estates, however you want to refer to it. Um, this is a proposed thirteen lot subdivision located off of Parker Street. As you'd mentioned, we've been here for the preliminary plan, um, answered a number of questions at that time. Also received a review letter from the town of East Long Meadow in the various departments back, I believe, in approximately July. Uh, we've provided a response to those comments, which I believe have all been generally addressed. Uh, in general, there has been no major changes to the plans, uh, from the preliminary, just some rejiggering of some of the lots, but generally. Um, Scarlet Drive uh, is similar to how we had originally proposed it. Um, we have also, um, very specifically were requested by DPW. Uh, that we look at the sewer out there. Um, the sewer capacity was a question from Felix. On, um, we have reviewed that, we hired a company called Flow Assessment Services and installed. A flow meter right in the manhole that was requested by Felix. Um, we did get that, those results back, uh, as part of the packet that's been provided to you, those flow results have been invited therewith. Essentially, uh, conducted a calculation based on those flow, the flow metering. Uh, and found that, uh, there's plenty of capacity in that line, which is a great, great news for us, and I think we, we found as well. Uh, there's a letter due to that effect, uh, dated December fifth. Um, and he basically states in that, you know, it appears that there's plenty of capacity.
I'm gonna actually stop the one I did miss, so, uh, can you?
Want me to read that?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, December fifth from Felix Fashan Water and Sewer Administrator. In a previous letter to Mr. Mitchell in regards to the added flows to the town's wastewater system, we requested a flow study be completed to ensure the wastewater system. Could handle the additional flows without straining or exceeding the capacity of the wastewater pipes. Our Levek Associates with the assistance of a subcontractor, Flow Assessment Services. Conducted a flow test of our wastewater system at a location provided by the DPW. The results of the flow testing proves there is ample capacity available for the addition of the intended homes in the proposed subdivision. The flow assessment is attached.
And why don't you just keep going from other town departments?
No comment from the clerks. Um, from Deputy Superintendent Mark Berman, applicant to obtain all necessary permits, including but not limited to the stormwater permit. And trench permit from the DPW after project approval and prior to the commencement of construction. Um, no comments from fire. Um, from the health department, if soils, the assessments are needed for onsite waste disposal systems, please contact the health department to schedule for fitnessing. No comments from police.
Sorry, Mr. Levek.
Oh, no, thank you. Um, so just a point of clarification, I had mentioned that nothing changed. Um, the stormwater basin location, we did change. Um, initially, I think we had some discussions about where it was, it was kind of be back behind some lots. Um, one, we were able to better accommodate the low point on the site, water flows downhill, so we lo- located it kind of on the corner. Also, it's, uh, in a, in a location that, um, in the event of a catastrophic failure, which, you know, we have to design these things to fail safely. Not only do we design up to and including a hundred year storm, but also to fail safely.
Like yesterday.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, so, uh, the, the location is, is better, cleaner, uh, makes more sense.
What about the request to do fencing around that?
Um, I think that's a probably a deeper discussion tonight. I want to confirm whether or not we show it. Um, I don't believe we do show it. We have approximately a three to one slope on, on either side, so it is a mowable slope. Um, can be, you know, you can walk up and down. We do understand that, um, it can be a concern. It will be fairly close to the road, which is probably good and bad. Maybe it could be an attractive nuisance, but, uh, right now we are not showing it, but it's not to say we couldn't incorporate that easily enough.
You used the magic, you used the magic word attractive nuisance.
Yeah, yeah, no, okay.
Rob, I think it is in there. It's a six foot high black vinyl coated chain link fence.
You added that?
Maybe I'm looking at a different one, but.
You know what?
I'm right here.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay, I guess we did add it.
If you just a little louder, you could let, so. They were requested to put a fence around the retention basin, so in the plans, we were to prove them would be a six foot high fence. Around the retention basin, so.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know, um, so I'm sorry, um, so happy to answer any questions you have through, through the board. We believe, uh, the items, uh, had been addressed. I know there was comments from the neighbors last time. Hopefully we answered those as well, but happy to answer anything through the chair.
Questions from the board?
The neighbors were concerned about runoff. How's that been addressed?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Punderson.
How are you?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, that's cool.
But we, we would, we've adjusted a couple, uh, a couple of things, but I believe. The neighbors, I, I want to say last time it was the neighbors to the south.
Right.
So we have a pretty significant remaining, uh, vegetated buffer along lot five, lot four and lot B. Um, the stormwater basin used to be, generally speaking, in the preliminary plan. Kind of back behind lot three, I don't know if you can see.
I can see it.
Oh, good, great. So right about here before, um, we've now located it. So that, you know, all of our stormwater drainage is essentially going to run to the stormwater basin. And then, you know, in, can, uh, overflow safely or, uh, during storm events can discharge into the overflow that's incorporated, so. Arguably, all the new waters being transferred, uh, to the design point out with the stormwater basin. And there is a vegetated buffer, I would say a homeowner couldn't, you know, wear that a little bit more. But the grades on site with lots four and lot five are generally flat and then drop. This way, so the, the water should, there's somewhat of a swale in these backyards as it exists. So shouldn't be any water running in that, that direction. So I think that generally answers their questions.
So I guess, from my memory and to go along with yours, Pete, so it, the retention basin was actually. Further, what would have been further down Fernwood.
Yes.
Right, right. So the placement of it takes it further away from any existing homes on Fernwood.
That is correct.
You give a distance, you know, what you think?
Approximately a few hundred feet, um, from where it was. But also there's a natural swale at the back of the subject properties. That will convey water in that direction as well to the east.
Well, I, I think one of the concerns of Mr. Trangisi was that you're gonna, it was gonna be cleared. Which would, you know, dramatically reduce the amount of water taken in by plants and all vegetation and so forth. But leaving a good wooded, wooded buffer up is, is, is great. That's definitely, definitely a remedy.
Hey, Rob was calling in A and lot, A and B, there's thirteen lots, but there's A and B. Is anything going there?
Yeah, no, so that was over A and R lots, so approval not required, so they have the required amount frontage area. So they could be endorsed through the A and R process.
Got it.
I anticipate that's what we got.
So while, while we're still here before we open to the public, can you just quickly address your request for waivers?
Absolutely.
Okay. For the chair, uh, we have, uh, requests for waivers, I believe it looks like.
Couple pages worth.
Yeah, a couple of pages worth, so let me just make sure I'm starting at the beginning here. So we have one waiver, the first waiver I believe is for the scale of the plans, just so that they properly fit onto a twenty-four by thirty-six sheet. Um, it just was, seemed appropriate, forty scale. Um, you know, we had different, different changes to different plans, but generally speaking, I believe they, they all are readable, um, and the intent of the plans. Um, it'd be, should be clear. Um, the next waiver, uh, was a requirement from the pavement width, uh, of thirty feet to allow us to reduce the pavement.
There were no concerns in the fire department on that.
Great, um, and again, less impervious, um, in general, that's. Good thing, I believe. Um, next one is for the installation of sidewalks on one side of the street.
Yeah, so let's address that.
Sure.
So, um, Nina, does that fall to the, if we were to allow this, they take what would have been the cost? To put those in, it goes into the special sidewalk fund of the town?
I actually don't know that well enough to comment on that.
Listen, then blue, um, sidewalk funds.
Yeah. So if we were to grant that, the cost of actually, I see Ralph with a perplexed look on his face. But I, but I seem to remember that if the planning board allowed the waiver of that, that then there was a payment in lieu of. That went into a special sidewalk fund for the town. So, and, and I'm pretty sure that they use, um. You know, uh, trying to think of the right phrase when you.
NASTOT.
When you use.
Hell, or.
No, when you hire public employees to do the job.
Or revealing wage.
Revealing wage, so I just put that out there for you. Okay.
So, so I don't know if Mr. Bretta wants to speak to that, so in the past, the, most municipalities do have a sidewalk fund. Um, and I don't recall what we did on the last few.
Pretty sure we, we did, and there was, uh, an expected payment into that.
Okay, so.
This kind of goes to the project you worked on, actually, at the corner of Maple and Dwight. It was the famous sidewalk to nowhere. And then we kind of developed the, the, you know, the method. That if the developer did not want to put a sidewalk in, you had to put money into that.
Right, right, gotcha. Want to speak to that?
I guess depending what the square, square footage is for putting in the walks where it would be, I don't know what the amount would be on it, so I could, I guess it's.
I haven't.
Question, so either.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess the thought would be, um, I've seen it happen a couple of ways, so if it was waived. Um, and the sidewalk fund, you know, if the, the funds were required to be placed in the sidewalk fund. If the cost associated with that included prevailing wage and ended up being more, I would assume the owner would want to just put them in. Um, I've also seen, and Mr. Bretta can speak to this, where the owners have, or the developers have difficulty with people not actually wanting. A sidewalk in front of their house for maintenance purposes, believe it or not.
I see that a lot.
Yeah, but the town also has concerns with, you know, school kids walking.
Yep.
Out to, you know, to get out to the main street and all that fun stuff, so.
Totally, totally agree. So whatever the planning board decides, um, I work with you.
These are separate decisions though.
Yeah.
The waiver or the move of, you could do, you could do either. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, um, then the next item is waiver for the protection of trees greater than eighteen inches in diameter. Um, this is a comment that comes on almost, almost every subdivision in every town that we deal with. Basically, what they're saying is, if trees over eighteen inches in diameter, obviously you can't build roadways or houses or whatnot. Um, it, it's just kind of a funny thing, so we always request that. Is there any question on that one?
Okay, you know, I was really focused on sidewalk. Are there, the rest are primarily. You know, standard waivers unless you have specific questions.
Oh, no.
Okay, okay, all right, great, so we can skip the rest of them. Thank you, sir. Are you all done, Mr. Levek?
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it to the public. If you wish to be heard on the matter, please come forward.
I just have one question regarding the fence.
Um.
Does it make, does it make a difference with a five, you said six foot was, I know six foot was on the plan, but it's requirements, would it be a four foot or five? I just think a six foot is kind of looking and overkill and.
I'm thinking of safety of children.
I'm fine with it.
Harder the better, yeah.
I just did one in Iago on when we put a four foot in it, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six, yeah, yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, thanks.
No problem.
So if you wish to come forward to speak, please come forward, sign in, state your name for people who are on, watching on Zoom.
My name's Chris Trangisi, I live on thirty-five Fernwood Drive. I had a couple of questions. First, where can I actually receive a copy of the new design here? Cause it's the first time I'm seeing it. Um. Cause I, you mentioned that the catch basin has been redirected, and I just wanted a, some clarity on where that would be in terms of my property along with my brothers. Cause we're, we live right next door to each other, so I would, if I can just get up and take a look, I would imagine, I'm here. Thirty-five.
That's the stormwater.
So that as soon as you turn in off a park, I was gonna be on that corner.
Yes.
Okay, um, you mentioned the swales, and that was gonna be one of my questions tonight, especially with all the rain accumulation we've gotten last night or yesterday, and especially in the past. As you mentioned, there is, my concern is, and that's about like twenty-five to thirty feet off of my property line. How much water is actually sitting there post-rain? I mean, obviously we're getting more rain than what we've normally anticipated, why not? Like, yes, so we got about two and a half inches. Like, if you were to go back there, you know, post-storm or even a day or night after, you'd see the amount of water that's actually sitting there. And I think you kind of, you know, touched upon it, but you could just give me another kind of an explanation of how exactly. That water is gonna run and how with all the construction and the demolition, how it won't actually impact my lot or my property and my brother's property.
All right, sure. Let me try to start from the beginning, but I apologize. So I think the first question we've answered, the new stormwater base location, you good there?
Yeah, I think so, so it's just, it's first right on the corner.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and your property is?
Thirty-five.
One of these?
Yeah, my brother should be the one on the right, and then I should, I'm thinking there on the left, yeah.
Okay, so you were but what looks like lot five.
Yeah.
And lot B, so lot B is not technically part of the subdivision, but it's still going to be divided. Um, still want to make sure that, you know, there's no problems, you know, with the adjacent property owners, so. The contours on here, these dat half, half tone dash lines.
Yeah.
These are elevation contours and they're set at one foot elevation.
Okay.
Okay, the one foot between each, so each, each one I stepped down is dropping a foot.
Okay.
So the water is dropping in this direction, is this not about right?
Yeah, and I think you had mentioned in the past that part of the reason why the basin was gonna go there was based off of the elevation.
Yeah, so we're, yeah, we, so what we're required to do is match, and try to explain this as simply as possible, but. The, before development, the pre-development condition, um, we analyze, okay, and we see how much water is coming off. And then in the post-development condition, we're required to compensate for impervious surfaces. Um, houses, roofs, et cetera, and we co- we collect the water from the road and from the houses. And all that gets collected in the drainage system, and then it gets metered out into our, so it gets run to the stormwater basin, which then meters it out like a, like a, an hourglass. Right, so all of this water is generally going this way, and then will continue on to the drainage.
An hourglass, right? So all of this water is generally going this way, and then will continue on to the drainage system if. If it exceeds a certain flow, and it's all metered out to basically go at the same amount that is. It is post-development versus pre. So we have to match.
Okay.
Can't increase it uh from a stormwater standpoint. Now, each individual lot, um, there are requirements for the building department. So when somebody goes to build a lot, they have to submit a plan, like a grading plan and a plot, they call it a plot plan. But ba- basically, it's the the house location, grading, how is that going to be done? What about the trees? What's clearing? That all has to be submitted. To get a building. So that's a little bit more detail on each of the lots that will be required. But you can expect that these homes, the fr- the water from the front yard flows towards the street.
Yeah.
And the water from the backyard will flow to the back, and then naturally, there's this swell that runs right here. Do you see the curve? So the way that those, that what that contour means is that it's lower in the middle and higher on the outsides. So that that is running in that general direction. This house will get graded. The water will generally run in that direction towards the storm.
Essentially, it's the best case scenario for what's actually probably occurring there now with the stagnant water post rainstorms.
Yeah, do you, where do you?
Like I said, right off my property line, you're talking about twenty-five to thirty feet. It's like, like you mentioned, it's essentially a swell. I almost think. The previous homeowner back in a little bit before I purchased my house, he had like an access road.
Yeah.
Where he used to drive the property and basically patrol to see what the neighbors were doing. And I think one of them happened in there was that may or may not be the access road that he was using.
Yeah.
Which is now a little bit overgrown and whatnot, and that water is continuously, and it's it's a big rainstorm, you know, you're talking two, two and a half inches of rain. That water stagnant. I'm just concerned, depending on goes into development, maybe it's going to be the best case scenario where I no longer actually see that water. But right now I'm seeing it, and it concerns me.
I think it's dependent upon, this is something that Mr. Bretta is hearing as well, if he is the builder. It's dependent on how lot five gets developed. So that's something to pay close attention to when the building permit were would to be issued for lot five. We don't know exactly what, how somebody's going to pick. We don't know exactly how they're going to want to grade it, but that, when lot five. Gets issued a building permit, we want to, we want to make, uh, pay close attention because we don't want to create problems for you. And um, this area is flat. It's almost flat.
Yeah.
That's what's happening. To get a good flow across lawn or even wooded areas, you want a minimum of two percent slope.
Okay.
So one, one foot in fifty feet, this is probably barely that. So it's just really flat. So that's why you probably see some puddling.
Yeah.
After events, but the good news is the material's permeable enough, but the soil is permeable enough, but the water does go down. It just takes some time, but that's really kind of a function of the grade here that exists. But I would, I would say that you shouldn't see any new water. Based on the contours, you shouldn't see any new water to your property.
Okay.
And when they do grade this, I would expect that they'll be grading it, and they'll have to pass the the test with the with the building.
So with the building department, is that something I have to monitor? Where is it going to come back to the board?
Though it will not come back to the board.
Okay.
It will be with the building department. And if, and if it looks like it's not working, then you need to go to the town, and the town can make sure that it complies with the plans. But that's my. If it doesn't comply with the plans, they can make them.
Okay, my concern is, and I know it was mentioned probably by my father and whatnot, uh, the last meeting, but I don't, I want to document, I don't get water. In my house now, my basement. My biggest concern is when it does go to development, that all of a sudden I have a water issue. And then with that being said, I know my dad mentioned this in the past, who do I contact if I do have an issue? In the case of scenario where this is complete and they packed up and they've left, do I?
So turn around. See the two people right behind you? The guy that's turning his head around.
I'm gonna have.
You see those two people?
They're probably not going to take my calls after a few dozen times, but.
That's who you see.
Okay, um, and then do I have a few other um questions? The buffer I had asked in the previous, do we know what the actual footage is from um that lot going to?
Lot five?
Yeah.
Right here?
Yeah.
I, so I don't want to misrepresent.
Yeah.
Five. So lot five has not been planned, so to speak. It, this is a depiction.
Of where the house would be.
Where the house would be.
Which is my concern is that I just have to continuously monitor what's going to go on, which I get it, it's part of it, but I was hoping with this being an approved. Subdivision possibly tonight that I'd have a definitive answer when I left.
So we don't really, well, I I I mean, it's. It's, so I'm not a developer, so I'm conjecture, but I I know you do some development work. I mean, you may have the owner, the person that buys the property, might want it a little deeper or might want it closer to the street.
Right, and that's what I'm.
No, and, you know.
Right now, I'll be honest, it works, it it looks good. I mean, the the amount of distance I think is feasible for privacy and whatnot, and. But again, we don't have control.
Right.
Over what a resident is going to do. I mean, I hope they don't want to be right to my property line because I don't necessarily want them to be. Um.
Oh, I I think they might have the same concerns that that you do.
They pay taxes on the land, so why wouldn't you want to utilize as much land as possible? Um.
I think you mentioned you don't want people looking in your.
Yeah, because I'm a ranch, you know, and I would imagine, are these houses going to be two stories or?
They may, they may not want to look into your house.
I hope.
There's a minimum setback that you can build in, right? So the house can't be literally put on.
Yeah, I figured that setback, though.
I'm gonna say, uh, at least.
It's probably thirty.
I think it's twenty-five or thirty.
Yeah, I have the envelopes on the other.
In a situation like hypothetically, what if they want to put a pole in? You know, what would that setback be?
That's different. Yeah, so I just.
All projections and a few.
Setback is different than the house.
Right.
So here are the building, yeah, thanks Tom. Yeah, so here are the building setbacks. Um, this is, what scale am I at? This is fifty scale. Here's my fingers. So this is fifty feet. So I think it's probably a forty-foot setback, thirty-five or thirty, you know, something like that. But that's just a building.
Yeah.
So what I want to be, I want to be fair to everyone. So. Subdiv- we're here for the subdivision, so the planning board is going to make a decision on the subdivision.
Yeah.
The individual lots is more of a building.
Inspector.
Building inspector related item. So you should definitely, you know, keep, keep up to what's going on. Once the roadway goes in. You know, Mr. Brett, I, you know, sure be, sure he'd be happy to communicate with you. Um, it's a beautiful lot. I'm thinking that if somebody builds it, they're going to want to leave some vegetation.
Yeah.
I don't know why they wouldn't, or they're going to want to screen.
I'd just say because you pay taxes on the property. I mean, why wouldn't you want to utilize what you're essentially paying for?
Right.
Um, but, and I know I asked this before, just a little bit of clarity here. Someone is going to purchase that lot, let's just say the one behind me. So this is not going to be cleared essentially by Mr. Bretta. Or he's not going to hire a logger or forester to come and wipe this.
Just for the record, I'm not selling any lots. I'm building on all the lots, so I'm not selling them. So I'm building them.
So you're building, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, um.
I don't remember going for sale.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's, it's going to be built and then sold.
Yeah, I'll be doing the building.
Okay, um, because what my question would be, with that being said, once it goes into development, especially the property right behind me. Will the, will there be erosion control installed? What's going to be the scenario? What's going to protect my property in the best case scenario?
Um, so anytime you have a project that has a disturbance over an acre of land that requires a stormwater permit. Uh, from the town, it also requires a NFTs, stormwater prevention prevention.
Yeah, I understand what that is, yes.
So when, when that gets put into place, we describe all the erosion controls. There's an o- operation. Uh, like a construction phase operation plan that has to be done, everything. So it's, it's all planned out.
Hmm.
And then it's a pocket permit. So there's an onsite copy of the permit.
Yeah.
That gets updated periodically, basically a couple times, you know, every storm event over a certain size, et cetera. So. That will be in place, so you can rest assured that the town, through their stormwater permit, there's no conservation on this one, but town through the stormwater permit. Has authority. The planning board could always, you know, exert authority if they needed it through the enforcement arm, you know, probably through the building commissioner.
Yeah.
Um, and definitely through the NFTs program, and that's through the EPA.
Okay.
So it's the fence, they don't, they don't mess with it.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just want to let everyone in the audience know. So we did have, you know, a similar. Uh, development, very similar Rosewood, uh, Rosewood Estates, which was, should me?
Hidden ponds.
Hidden ponds, yes, hidden ponds. So if you drove down Elm, hung a left, um, right before Graziano's and went way back there. And, you know, they put in a nice development, but there were some concerns about, you know, retention and, you know, the amount of water collecting and so forth. And the town was all over that. I mean, very, I I thought the town did an outstanding job. You know, making sure that everything was done correctly, explaining everything to the neighbors. They did, the town was very responsive to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Trangacy, how you doing? How far is that dirt road behind your property, the one that winds in there?
Wh- where the water is?
Now, where we use.
That dirt road that goes around the property.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm thinking where that water is stagnant. And I want to say it's, and one of my, my neighbors may be able to confirm it, but I want to say maybe it's like twenty to twenty-five feet off of my property line. From my property line, I can clearly see the water being stagnant, sitting there. Um. Go ahead.
Do you think, I mean, that was, that was brought above grade with gravel. Do you think once that's gone, it will help the drainage off the back of your property there?
So that's what I'm wondering, and that's why I'm asking these questions, uh, to assure that.
That guy went in there and raised that up at least a foot, which is going to have to stop some of the water from draining out, the way I see it.
So that's why, that's why I had mentioned, and I had asked that the water that I'm seeing now with the new location and the level and the elevation. If it's going to actually improve what's there now, which I, I'm hoping, um.
What you think of that? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Wouldn't you think that little dirt road is is damming up some stuff and stopping the proper flow? It seems to be that way with me.
I think it's possible, and I'm just hypothetically saying that that's what's happening, I think, because I know. And I knew the neighbor and how he was, um.
Well, he's going to have to build to the plans, and.
Right.
Plans are saying, yes, it's going to solve the issue.
Right. And, um, I know it's a thirteen lot subdivision, but I'm seeing in your new map, it's fifteen. So are those existing, are those other two houses going to be on Fernwood? And referring back to the previous meeting, there was a discussion about a possible HOA for that subdivision. And if.
The retention for maintenance of the.
Exactly. So I wanted to revert back to discuss the, essentially, who's going to be maintaining this catch basin? Um, now knowing there's going to be a six-foot fence, I'm probably not going to really notice what's necessary in there, but if something grows over six feet, I'm gonna. And who's going to take care of it? And do catch basins go under a certain inspection after a certain amount of years? And does, do we know who would inspect them?
Mr. Christensen, do you care to?
Got a stormwater report, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so I think the the first question was, would there be a homeowners association? So for the, for the maintenance of the stormwater basin, there'd be a homeowners association. Um, that said, there's an operation and maintenance plan, both construction phase and long term. Operation and maintenance plan is part of the stormwater uh application and part of the stormwater drainage report that we put together. And it has very specific details on what needs to be done for cleaning out the deep zone catch basin. In the drainage system as well as the basin itself. So we talked about the basin, talking about the earth and, and how that gets maintained. That's very specific, and it's, um, you know, inspected in a couple of different ways, a few times a year. And, you know, ongoing, that's ongoing.
Who inspects it?
Um, it's, it's inspected by the homeowners association typically.
So residents that live, uh, when you say the homeowners association.
They would hire.
The residents.
Yes, uh, of the subdivision.
So we're expecting individuals that live in these houses to potentially just pick up the phone and say, hey, we need our catch basin inspected?
So jointly and severally, the homeowners associations would be responsible for the maintenance of the basins. Um, typically, they have a little bit of a board, not much to them, they don't, they're, it's a huge cost to them. Um, but that board, say you're the chairman of the board that year, uh, you would call JR. There's stormwater basin, somebody like that.
Yeah, they have to remember that if it's not maintained, it impacts their property as well.
Right, but I mean.
So they, they have some skin in the game.
You drive through subdivisions or new properties and you see catch basins all the time, are they really maintained to? The, where they necessarily should be held accountable?
If they're not maintained, um, the town typically has a provision in their decision that allows the town to go in at the expense of the homeowners. Association and do it themselves. So there will be an easement in favor of the, of the town, allowing the town to go in there. And the town would be, you know, charging the homeowner, so.
And if they don't pay, there's a lien on the property.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So if it appeared to be overgrown, I would essentially knock on someone's door and say, hey, just to let you know, you're responsible for this.
Turn around again.
You're not giving out my number, too.
I think it's, I think it's a lot to, I mean, they're, they're already responsible for their yards and whatnot, and to do the extracurricular. I mean, is it really expected for somebody to actually maintain that?
Oh, so this issue has been debated and debated.
Sure has.
And debated, town meetings, you know, it's, it's the way it is after all that debate.
You get a not, you get a neighborhood or neighbor that's all, well, I don't possibly doesn't get along with another neighbor. You think so and so is going to go out there with hedge trimmers or weed whacker and all of a sudden maintain this property?
But then again, if, if it's not functioning correctly.
Right.
Because it's overgrown and it's not being maintained, it's going to impact a number of properties.
But so I wouldn't be part of that HOA on Fernwood, and it could potentially.
But you can also go to the town, and the town has rights that they can enforce.
Okay, alright.
Okay, all set?
Let me see.
Give you those.
I think I'm all set. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, I do.
Okay, good question.
Appreciate it, thanks.
All right, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Mr. Page?
Good evening again, Ralph Page, one thirty-seven Peace Road. Um, I'd like to make two comments. Um, Mr. Bretta did a development on Prospect Street better, betterly. Um, I will say that, um, stormwater system that's there is maintained, it's taken care of, they've done a wonderful job. Um, there were some issues right at the beginning with it getting clogged. He went in, took care of the whole situation, did a great job with it. I'm very impressed. Um, my point, uh, my thought process is. The town of East Long Meadow is currently looking at high-speed internet. Um, I'm assuming all utilities in this development will be. Subsurface underground. Um, can the planning board require an additional conduit to go in? So that when high-speed internet comes in, we do not have to re-dig up a brand-new development. It's a very cheap, low-cost way. Um, I know we're going to be, we're anticipating. Because no vote's been taken yet, but we're anticipating doing the entire town with fiber optics. Um, I, I think in this case, it would be prudent to say, hey, we want a spare conduit put in. Um, based on what IT or the DPW would say would be the correct diameter and all. Um, instead of tearing it all up.
Good rep.
Good question. And the second thing, what zone was this? Is it A? If it's A zone, it's fifty-foot setback and fifty-foot rear lot line.
Okay.
Um, and again, once someone moves in, they can remove the trees all the way to their property line because they own the property. Um, so although there may be good thoughts and, hey, we're going to leave this huge buffer, it doesn't always happen.
Nope.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Yes, sir.
You might.
No, you're a resident.
I'll be quick, too. Uh, Tom Christensen, one thirty-five Sanford Street, Islamino Mass. Um, so, uh, the waivers you brought up. Uh, typically, like the thirty-foot pavement is granted. We haven't built a thirty-foot street in quite some time, stormwater, the whole bit. Uh, same with sidewalks, most one side of the street, I think the last five anyway, since I've been in back in town. Uh, we've had just single side. My, my question is more about, we now have sidewalk on the other side of Parker Street.
Oh, okay.
So you're going to have people trying to get there.
Across.
So could we talk about or think about a crosswalk? And or potential rapid flashing beacon, like just got put in a few hundred feet down the road at Rollins? For, for safe crossing of pedestrians?
Would that require town other, besides playing board? Would that require?
No, well, he, they, I think you had done some, did you do some traffic and site distance stuff?
Yeah, we, yeah, and again, site just, we're, we're in good shape, thank goodness there. Um.
But you have to put up a pedestrian crossing sign.
Well, that's, I mean, yeah, if there was, if there was a, uh, if there was a sidewalk on one side of the street as proposed with the waiver, right? There could be a landing and a cross, a cross Parker.
Does the planning board, I don't know.
But we have the authority to do that.
To potentially waive the sidewalk in lieu of.
In lieu of the crossing?
Or the crosswalk in lieu of.
That was a good try.
Well, just, just the conversation, I mean, if there is a sidewalk there. People are gonna look for somewhere to go, and it's gonna be right across Parker Street, and everybody's going forty-five right there.
Yeah, and years, years ago, I sat on the town appropriations committee, and I know we put money every single year into the town sidewalk fund. And the concept was to reduce busing.
Right.
So it's great to see sidewalks coming further down Parker and, you know, making more connections, so that makes sense. That was the thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Hearing none. So, um, to have a motion to close the, the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So on the motion to close the public hearing by roll call, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well, okay. So, um, I'd like someone to at least make a motion, I, you know, one way or another, oh, you have to make a positive motion. So make a motion to approve. Get a second, and then we can do our discussion about whether we wish to do something about the sidewalk, Mr. Page's um, recommendation, Mr. Christensen's, and all the specific waivers as well. So can we do that?
I make a motion to approve the request for definitive subdivision approval for Oakwood Estates Scarlet Drive at three sixty-two Parker Street, three sixty-eight Parker Street. Fernwood Drive parcel ID five dash ten dash one A and reaffirm with Drive parcel ID sixty-three dash twenty-six dash zero. With the waivers and conditions of approval noted.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so discussion.
I would like to see that the, uh, flashing yellow light in a specific state. You know, state-approved, uh, crossing between the sidewalk, that they're gonna have whatever side of the road is gonna be on, I think it's the south side. And the, and the sidewalk on Parker Street. I think that's a great idea, and I think it's needed.
So I'm going to agree and disagree, if, if I can. I think it's a lot of extra costs that you don't, that I've not seen us require other developments to, to actually pay for the light associated with it, the flashing light. I'm all for putting in a crosswalk, the, you know, to get across the street to go to, you know, to, uh, the sidewalk on Parker, but I, I wouldn't support making the developer pay for the light associated with it.
You don't necessarily need the light, just a, a couple of warning signs, and the state laws, when somebody's in the, in the, in the crosswalk, hey, you have to stop, so. Right, something should be put there.
But I'm also, but I'm a little confused, and while you're here, Mr. Christensen, so.
I'm so glad I came.
Is it within the purview of the planning board to make decisions on, on traffic signs being installed that aren't part of the subdivision?
I think if you were going to, you could require a crosswalk.
Yeah, but not, but not signs.
No, but if they put in a crosswalk.
Then the town council or whoever, or you. Well, I got one guy shaking his head and one guy saying yes, so.
Maybe not.
Yeah, I, I don't know whether it's within our purview or traffic control signage on that is not associated with the site, well, not associated on the property of the site plan.
Can we ask for a provision on their side of the street so that we may add that, the town, just to be safe? We, we'll, we can, we'll get a grant for that in a second, but as long as the, the handicap, the accessible ramp on, on your side of the street is so that it's facing across, I'd be willing, that's fine.
I have no problem. Yeah, I agree, I'm all for that with the handicap.
That's great.
Well, that was, that was my concern about. Definitely, I'm all for that with the crosswalk with the handicap, I'm a hundred percent. Because they're going around town and they've, they've redone everything, a lot of the crosswalks in town. Agawam, and it came out beautiful, we got the crosswalk there, and it gets used, and actually people stand there and the cars stop. Right. High-traffic street on Raleigh Street, and they stop, it works out great. Okay, like, that was my concern about cap access.
On Maple Street.
Oh, yeah.
Or, or no, on, um, Maple Shade.
Yeah.
Maple Shade, yeah. Alright, so on, on Mr. Page's recommendation, an extra plastic conduit, or conduit. Yeah.
I have no problem, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, great, okay.
I love that idea, so.
Okay.
All for it.
So let's just, um, on those two conditions, can we, so we just have a, you know, a vote on that. So can I have a motion to, uh, or a motion?
You want to amend the emotion?
Thank you.
Addend the motion? Amended?
Don't get me confused here.
No, why don't, okay, why don't we approve this one, and then we can go back and address the two conditions that we're, we're talking about in a separate motion.
Okay.
Encompassing the whole thing. We've got a motion on the floor that's been seconded.
Yep.
To approve this with conditions. Now we've discussed the conditions, so we can further vote on the conditions that we're all in agreement on.
Okay, and then we'll just take one last vote on the proposed waivers.
Correct.
Okay.
Alright.
Any further discussion? On the motion, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
This chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So on the waivers. So I'm fine waiving everything, I, I, let's take a vote, waiving, or waiving all the waivers they've requested with the exception of the sidewalk, because I'd like to have a, just a quick discussion on that, so we're just slowly getting things off the table. So do I have a motion to approve the waivers with the exception of the sidewalk?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? On that motion, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So I guess I'm gonna just look to you two uh, about how we could potentially word, um, the sidewalk. Question, does anybody really have a, a hard feeling one way or a firm feeling on one way or the other? Allow the waiver of the sidewalk on one side within subdivision? Which would require him to, to the best of my information, and I could be wrong, and you might have to check with the planning department, would require a contribution to the, um, sidewalk fund? Or we don't waive that?
I mean, I have one sidewalk in my neighborhood, and I, I like it.
Are you on a subdivision?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't have a sidewalk, so.
I know you don't. Neither do I, yeah, I like it down the one side.
Yeah.
Looks a little cleaner, but I mean. I do have a lot of people in my subdivisions that just don't wanna do the snow removal and sidewalks and stuff too, so it's a, it's kind of a, you know.
So I think.
The one side of them.
Yeah, I, I think we're taking a compromise because we're gonna require the, the landing to then go across the street to Parker. So I, I'd be, I would be okay now just waiving the requirement to have a, a one sidewalk, so.
I agree.
I agree with that.
Alright, can I have a motion on that?
About so moved.
A motion made in second, any further question? Pete?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So on the motion, Mr. Punderson.
Aye, and that, wait, that, that includes the crosswalk though, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we already did that, yeah.
As long as we have the authority to do that.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
All set?
Thank you. You already voted on the subdivision?
Yeah, yeah. First thing.
Oh, yeah. Awesome.
We approved it, that's great. It's a condition.
For efficiency.
Condition. We did a vote on the conduit. Thank you, just weren't paying attention, Ralph. Well, thank you for everybody for sitting through this, it really is a, kind of, you know, we're mashing it together and trying to get the best project we possibly can, so. Alright, Mr. Terrell, next item.
These are easy. Uh, case SP dash two thousand twenty-three dash oh nine, request for special permit for best back and body massage therapist facility at thirty-one Harkness Ave, assessors parcel ID twelve dash thirty-three dash zero. Located in the business owning district applicant Danielle Berry, four six three Main Street, Summers, Connecticut, oh six.
So planning board members in attendance for this hearing, Mr. Punderson, Ms. Fonseca, Mr. Chair Swallow, Mr. Terrell, and myself, Russell Denver. Thank you for sitting through this.
Hi.
Okay, so tell us what your plans are for that site.
Um, there's already a, I guess, a primary business there. I will be renting a room from the main leaser of that space. Uh, it's already been approved by the owner of the apartment.
Hours of operation?
Um, they will vary depending on the day, Mondays and Wednesdays will be a late start, one thirty till, uh, eight. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays, basically nine till eight, but I do have a big gap in the afternoon. Fridays will be nine to five, and Saturdays will be eight to twelve.
And you will just be the sole practitioner there? Okay, any questions from the board?
I do have no food or anything being sold or anything?
No.
So this is a, uh, public hearing, so I'll open it to the public, anyone wish to be heard on this matter? One more time, anyone wish to be heard on this matter? Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? So, uh, to vote to close the public hearing, Mr. Punderson. Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Mr. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
I'm, uh, I as well. Any further discussion? Have a motion to, motion to approve the special permit?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, so on the main motion to approve, Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Terrell.
Right, um, case SP dash two thousand twenty-three dash ten. Request for amendment of special permit granted to Doris Dental, a dental office of two eighty-one Maple Streets, parcel ID six dash twelve A dash two A located in the Residence B zoning district applicant Glenn D Goodman, Esquire eighty-two Maple Street, Springfield, one one oh five.
Good evening, good evening. Let's play, I'll have you sign in first.
I have, uh, Dr. Doris to my right, Julian from All Seasons Landscaping to my left. Thank you very much.
Sure, so you're bringing amendment to your special permit?
Yes, we are.
Address that.
Yes, so, uh, in effect, the existing buffer had become overgrown, some trees that were, uh, dangerously perched on the property, um, landscapers came in, craned those out, it's a good thing they did, they were very rotted. Um, happened in existence last night during the storm, I think we would have seen some major damage because they were so rotted out. When we pulled and uprooted, uh, those trees and basically destroyed the vegetative buffer that was existing. So we proposed some options, um, you know, for the town and the board. Um, we have three options, we look at, uh, option number one, which is the arborvitae, that's probably the most, um, uh, practical solution. Um, it's, you know, fully compliant for, we'll start at four feet, dense cover. Um, Mr. Dr. Doris is doing some other work around the property, it's actually a lovely property. So, um, we think those will add really nice aesthetic and a, and a wonderful for the, for the neighbors. Pardon me.
Right?
Yeah, that's, that's essentially, it's really that easy.
Yeah, okay, so how long ago, so I drove by there last week and really was like, wow, I, I can't believe this. So when did you take the, when did you take it out? And what, I mean, so yesterday was yesterday, and they, they were taken out before yesterday. And what necessitated you taking them out without first approaching the town?
Yes, and what was the date, Doctor? Do you remember the timeframe? I think it was August. Yeah, and, and again, these are old, uh, deciduous trees that were precariously, they were falling, they were rotted. Landscaper came on and they just decided that it was dangerous enough that they needed to, to take quick action. We apologize, we, we do have the timeline a little bit reversed here, um, we, we do apologize for that. I can't undo that, but, um, I think it was, it was a necessity, we felt like there was potential harm. It would have fallen, uh, the neighbors in particular, because several of the trees were leaning towards the, the nearby residential area.
So as you saw with some of the previous presenters, they actually brought up a board?
And I apologize.
So you could actually see what you're going to, what you're proposing?
Yeah.
So there's really nothing for anyone to be able to see what's going on other than this is, you know.
I apologize, you know, this, yeah, but, so
who wants to explain to the crowd what you're proposing to do?
Yeah, we, we can.
We can run through it.
Yeah, I want you to tell them, I do apologize.
So I mean, landscape design one as, uh.
So I can, I can pass this.
You appreciate that.
I have. One, one of the neighbors might want to, and I'll share with my, uh, my fellow board members. Yeah, thank you. We have a couple more?
Yep.
Well, we got a couple more, we. Any handout? Yeah, why don't you share with, uh, no?
I'm gonna say. You decide?
I guess just gave mine away, I'll share with.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Basically, the style of the west, of course, is a problem. Yes, on every site.
Okay, okay. I'll start with one.
Okay, so to the back of the building, there is an emerald green arborvitae hedge there, we did not propose touching that at all. It's there currently, so basically to the left of the property and along the front behind the neighbor's property, there would be an arborvitae hedge of either green giant or dark American arborvitae's. And then a small, another small.
So I, I, I wanna put this in context. Okay, maybe for all of us that don't know that specific property that well. So I know where Doris, that is Doris correctly, right, Doris Dantil is. I'm at their driveway, so I can understand the back of the property.
Correct, directly behind the.
That has all the arborvitae's currently there.
Yes, correct.
To the left, I noticed a powder blue garage.
That does not belong Dr. Doris, as I'm aware.
No.
Okay.
So it's everything behind that, and then on the right-hand side of the property, if you're looking from the street, there was another area of vegetation towards the back, we've also replaced that with another arborvitae hedge as well.
Can you, does someone know when, because it looks like there was landscaping next to that powder blue garage? Do anyone know who owns the property and when they took it down? Okay, thank you, alright. So can you just say one more time, so how big will those arborvitae's be along the left-hand side?
Uh, we had quoted for five to six footers in this plan.
Okay, and arborvitae's are expected to grow a foot a year?
Eighteen inches a year.
Yeah, okay.
Very fast growing, the existing emerald green arborvitae hedge in the back. Emerald green arborvitae's are very slow growing, which is why it's done such a poor job the past couple of years. We did not plant those, um, somebody, the previous owner actually had, I believe.
Okay. Who?
Okay, who has a series of evergreens? Between blue spruces and Canadian hemlocks. On the left-hand side once again, and behind the powder blue garage, as you had mentioned. This would be more of a natural, uh, landscape border, I think it would turn into. It would definitely be probably harder to maintain down the road, they're gonna get significant in height. Maybe that's a concern as well for the neighbors. Um, and then along the right-hand side where the small area of vegetation was removed, again, five to six foot green giant or dark American arborvitae's, in replacement of the vegetation that was removed.
So are the black marks on the right-hand side an actual representation of how many you plan to put in?
Yes.
Okay. Cause I, I do, I do want people to know that we do follow up on landscaping.
Yes.
So just, just past that property is what I believe that disaster of the medical complex. And we fought the developer for like four years to make sure the landscaping was actually per the plan. So we do follow up on all that stuff, so.
Okay, and also all the plants. Okay, and also all the plant symbols are to scale to the size that they would be planted.
Okay. All right. Number three.
Moving on to three, it's a combination of Cleveland Select pear trees and rhododendrons on the left-hand side and behind the blue garage and house. And then once again on the right, it's the five to six foot green giants or dark Americans.
Okay.
This is probably the, going to be the most impractical design out of all the three.
And why is that?
Because I think it'll just be too much. It'll overgrow the area uh down the road and it's not, I don't think it's going to achieve especially for the neighbor to the left, uh complete screening.
Okay. Questions from the board? Okay. Questions? Questions from the board?
So out of the three, which is probably your expert, the best?
Definitely the first one is going to be, I think, the best for the neighbors. Uh, for Dr. Doris here and from a maintenance perspective. It'll be very easy to keep them maintained once they get to a desirable height.
Yeah. All right, so this is um. Any questions from the board before I open to the public? Okay, so if you could step back and well, um, this is a public hearing. So members of the planning board present for this public hearing are Mr. Punderson, Mr. Fransika, Ms. Charis Swallow, Mr. Terrell and myself, Russell Denver. So anyone from the public wish to come forward and speak about this matter?
Everyone?
Please sign in, state your names.
My name's Kevin Mencella. I live at five Fairway Lane. I'm the property to the left.
Yep. Mr. Care Better's property or development?
Yes.
Okay.
Yo. Signing us in. So, we, we have some initial concerns here, um. Recently, because of the rain, that was all, I mean. I can't really attest to the condition of the trees from what I saw. I'm not a licensed arborist, but the trees were left there as a buffer zone in between the, the business and the residential. They looked all right to me. I can't attest to that, but I guess I have questions for the board as well. As far as a vegetative buffer in between a um business and a residential. Is that required? Was that required for the original subdivision? Does that still need to be there?
So it was part of their special permit for the use of the property?
Yeah. Okay, so. What's been done in the last uh two weeks, I think, if I'm speaking, it may, may have been three weeks, is that, that this was done at the end of July. Uh, beginning of August was the timeframe when this stuff was taken out. We were on vacation. That's how I remember that date. When we came home, the trees were gone. Um, this all was left this way until uh week and a half, two weeks ago. And which case it started being cleaned up, which is the goal here is to get it back to looking better. However, I have concerns too with all the recent rain that we've had. There's the, the grading. I don't know if more is going on. I, I haven't seen what was being passed around and stuff like that. So I don't know if there's going to be more grading or anything put in. But there is a river running behind there now. So there's a lot of runoff, um. With those trees gone, I actually emailed and I apologize because I did this this afternoon, but I emailed a bunch of before and after pictures as well. And I didn't know if um you said you'd been out there to look at it, so I didn't know if anybody else had.
I, I drove by it and I was taken aback, so I stopped and kind of went into the parking lot and, or to look around.
Yeah, and I was going to, that was going to be a question of mine was, was, is can we request the site visit by the planning board if there hasn't been one, so you can see what's going on over there? I'm not.
Yeah, I mean, you could request that. I mean, we could, we could make that decision that we wanted to go and look at the site before we made a decision.
Okay.
We have every right to do that.
Okay. Um. With those, with, with that buffer being taken down, it not only opens us up to a parking lot, which we've spent tens of thousands of dollars and this is, has nothing to do with them, but we did put up a, a deck and a pool and went through all the proper channels to, and get the permitting and everything and had Smith Associates out to make sure that everything was put in the right place. And we had a private backyard and we no longer have that, and it's not a matter of looking into a single neighbor where you're saying, hi, Joe and Betty over there, we have a parking lot with people coming in. And it's not private anymore. It's also opened us up not only to that parking lot, but to the road. We can see the road. You can see our property from the road now and there's a lot of car noise going on over there. Um. Some minor things that I'm sure we could work with him on, I've had no, no contact with them, uh the dentist's office. Uh, I, when this was all going on, I, I was on vacation. I tried to have my father go over there. He was unable to get in contact with uh Mr. Doris, so uh we weren't able to have any contact and there's been no communication back and forth. So I was really not sure what was going on for the past three and a half, four and a half months. Um, there are lights on the building that are shining into our house now that were not an issue before. Um, the cars, now that there is no buffer zone in between there and this is a concern with if we're just putting arborvitae's in there, is there going to be a fence? We are looking at a dumpster now and the, which I thought as a business needed to be set up, fenced around, but I could be off base on that. I'm not sure. Um. But you know, it's an issue because there's nothing blocking it now. So when everybody parks facing our house and they fire up their cars at night when they're leaving, it's like Christmas vacation, turning on the, plugging in the lights and just the whole house is lit up and that wasn't the case before with buffer zone. So I want to be heard and I want to make sure that this is um that we have a correct plan going forward and it's not just going to be really nearly putting a couple of bushes in.
Yep.
And it's going to be a proper separation of what was, and, and what was there before. And I don't know if you guys can look at those pictures of the before and after and see what it is. Not sure what's required. I just figured I would send them along.
Okay, thank you. So Nina, how, how did this find its way to the planning board at this time?
Um, so it started off with some complaints to the building commissioner that the vegetative buffer was removed. Um, and he found in the twenty seventeen special permit that there was a condition of approval that said the site had to conform to this existing condition site plan dated twenty seventeen. Um, and without that vegetative buffer or the landscape buffer, it does not conform to those site plans. So the amendment would be to amend that, that condition to reflect new site plans.
Okay. And do you have any idea when he was notified? Did he send a demand letter?
First letter was dated August. But I'm not positive. September seventh, possibly.
And it was addressed to?
To Doris Centile, two eighty-one Maple Street.
Okay. So they've known about this since September, the middle of September?
Yep.
And October, November, December, three months, months, three and a half months to come front of the planning board. Okay. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you covered it.
Anyone else like to be heard on this matter? Sign in.
Um, my name is Alexa. Uh, this is my husband Bonshi. Uh, we are owners of Seven Fairway Lane, so right next door. Um. And not great with public speaking. I had pre-typed something up. A lot of it does echo what uh Mr. Mencella had stated. So we'll try to not be too repetitive. Um, but something we do have is a before picture. Um, we bought the property in two thousand twenty-two. Um, and so unfortunately, we don't know what it looked like um in twenty seventeen. Initial site plans were approved. Can imagine it still looked um pretty similar to this. Um. So it's just kind of like, just to show like a. Yeah.
So those, those are mature trees?
Yes.
They're not our, not arborvitae's. Correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, healthy appearing as opposed to the trees across the street on the other side of Fairway Lane by the medical offices, but that's an issue. Those ones are falling down with every storm. These ones, we've never had anything fall down with these trees. Um. But yeah, again, not to repeat. Um, too much as well, um. But yeah, just kind of touching on over the last four months, having no contact, no attempt of contact from the business or Dr. Doris himself, um and just adding on to the, you know. It's not just like the car lights um that fire on at the end of business day. There's like multiple cars that have their lights on for hours at a time during the day. Um. So it's, it's not just like brief interruptions. It's, it's continued throughout the day. It's the floodlights at night. It's staring at the back of a molded building, which is not visible from the road, but visible from our property. Um, so yeah, I guess when we're just looking at these um landscaping options, um. Seems like proposal number three would not do justice and yeah, so uh definitely leaning towards number one, at least if we had to pick from the three. Um, and then I think just one other thing that I wanted to bring attention to was do we need to create some sort of definition of what the buffer space should be? How much sound and privacy barrier um we can try to emulate from the previous barrier that we had, um.
Yeah, getting, getting pictures of the previous you know, uh vegetation would be extremely helpful. If there's some way that you could replicate that and, you know.
I have emailed those.
So that's part of the emails?
Part of the, yeah, there's lots.
So it was yesterday's storm, I lost power and I haven't had internet since. Long story with Spectrum, but I don't want to go there, so.
And we had, we had some pictures as well that we could share. Uh, but yeah, this is far different and I think even the ideal proposition of one is, is, is far deficient compared to what was there before.
Okay.
And so yeah, moving forward with the plan that you guys do vote on and decide on, um yeah, maybe some sort of definition in there. Like you said, it sounds like you do follow up on landscaping, which is great. Um.
And we just, I think we all have to kind of keep in mind that any type of landscaping that they now put in, it's going to take a while to mature.
Right.
And it's going to be almost impossible to replicate what was there growing for, you know, fifteen, twenty, twenty years, so.
Right. So in the meantime, you know, just, just a fence alone, obviously, is not going to cut it, but do they also need to do a a fence behind the trees on, on their side of the property? While the five to six foot
And we can.
Trees grow.
I think we could also talk to the lighting to make them change the lighting, so it's facing down. We do that often with a lot of profit, a lot of buildings that we permit, so.
What's the grade like on that side? I know it's maybe deceiving, but are you, is the set down? Are you set up higher than?
We're set down.
Yeah. You're below the, the building's higher or you're higher?
The, the building is higher.
Building's higher.
Okay.
Like the parking lot headlights are I don't know, like chest height in, in the yard.
And when they're on their deck, it's going to be like eye level with the.
Thinking for planting reasons, what would be a better? If you got to go a lot further because you're set lower, you know what I mean?
Correct.
You're at least up. A little bit.
Okay. I, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No.
Okay, thank you.
My name's.
Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter?
My name's David Dulzek. I live at twenty-six Lassard Circle. I directly abut Dr. Doris's property. My whole backyard abuts his whole back of his building. I've been living there for over twenty-five years. You want to know what privacy is like? Well, we have a lot more privacy before Fairway Lane, because it was all woods back there.
Yep.
Problem with that is, with woods comes bittersweet. Those invasive vines that wrap around everything. I got pictures here. If you want to see what it looked like twenty-five years ago and what it looks like right now, if you'd like to see them out.
Okay.
For you.
Yeah.
Bringing them out. Good sized pictures. I think you'll be able to tell just by looking. That's from my looking out the back of my house where we live, where our kitchen table is. That's the back of the building. Dr. Doris has spent an incredible amount of money tearing all this stuff down and he needed to. Because the only way to get that bittersweet out is to get it down by the roots and pull it all out. All those trees had to go in order for this to be rectified. Sometimes you got to suffer. I had to suffer. I'm the one that put in the complaint two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
About no, no barrier, because once the leaves fall off the trees, whatever trees were left, the pines were rotten to the core. He had oak trees that were huge and leaning way, way over that way, but one was rotten in the middle and a good storm would have brought it right on my upstairs bedroom. He took all those down. Um. The only problem was he inherited this problem from Dr. Howe, who was there before. I spoke to him for many years. When are you going to do something about all this bittersweet? Because it's strangling your pine trees. We're, we're starting to get gaps and not have the privacy we used to have. Now I'm seeing your parking lot. I'm not spending a dime on this place, he told me. The only reason he did that in two thousand seventeen was because you guys put the screws to him and said, we're going to fine you two hundred dollars a day if you don't do something about it.
So let's, let's clarify that. None of us were here in two thousand seventeen, so we didn't do any screwing.
Signed, I got your signature.
I was here for fairway drive.
I hear you.
I was here for.
I don't know. I got your signature on this, on the.
Really?
Yeah, I do. I really, really.
Not that long? Maybe it's time I retire.
I was in with the rest of the paperwork, but.
Okay.
But your name's on here.
Goodness, okay, you got me. All right, you got me.
And the reason I'm, I'm bringing this up is because I seem to keep hearing all this stuff about four-foot high trees that have to be planted. They got to be four feet as, as a buffer. When that row of arborvitae's that you see against my brand new fence and it's the elevation of the houses as well, my house as opposed to his parking lot.
So when, when were those put in?
Two thousand seventeen. They've been in there for seven years.
A little guy?
This big when they planted them and you guys signed off on it or whoever signed off on these, when he looked at them. He planted about fifty of them and they're tiny. And now they're only maybe this tall.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to be ninety before I get to not see the back of his building.
I won't be on the planning board when you're. Don't know about that.
Probably not going to live to see ninety, right? But the thing of it is, is that number one, he's talking about planting different types of arborvitae's on the sides. And starting to go to the sixty-eight footers. Well, what's that going to do for me?
Nothing. Right.
And there are different, and even his his own, his own property maintenance and my landscaper both said, the variety of arborvitae is planted back where on my line will never grow that big. They're not meant for cover. They will not, they're not, they're just not going to cut. It's the wrong variety. And I think Pete probably knows that too.
Got to be green giants.
How are you, Pete?
I'm good, Dave. Good to see you, pal. They really have to be green giants. I, I just planted nine of them about four years ago that bought from Ralph Page. And they're about five feet tall. They're ten feet tall now.
Yeah.
They, they, and they grow, they grow in width dramatically. You can't see anything through them. So I, I would see like a six-foot stockade fence with green giants and in three years, the problem's done.
I don't know something, a stockade fence, at least on my side, because I have a stockade fence, a wooden stockade. The problem is, it's elevation wise, it's, it's about four and a half to five feet lower than his parking lot height is. So it doesn't do, it's like having a two-foot fence.
Yeah.
But the, the green giants.
He's up where his level is and then what is he going to put? Another fence against my fence and there's going to be a dead zone in the middle. He can't do that, do that. So.
A good remedy is the green giants. They grow dramatically. You have to trim them after about three or four years because they get too tall. And I have them right on Old Farm Road and you can't see the houses. You can't see light through them. They're there all year long and that would be my suggestion. Only the green giants, because those other little thin ones, they don't grow for anything. They, they grow about six feet tall at most.
And if, and to be honest, if Dr. Doris hadn't pulled out all that all those vines and there's poison ivy, poison oak, sumac, you name it, it was all growing back there. You couldn't even see through it. It was a great buffer once the leaves are once the leaves are gone and the cold weather comes and there's no more buffer. So I'm looking at I, I, I'm really commending him for the money that he spent. I know he's spent a ton of money this past year on this place. And he inherited that like that from Dr. Howe, who was there before, didn't want to spend. However, there are a couple of things I'd like to see done. Like number one, please pressure wash the back of that building. It is disgustingly green and gross. You can see by the pictures of it. And put some shades in your windows. So if I don't, when I'm eating dinner, I don't look out my slider and watch somebody's mouth wide open getting drilled. Because there's no shade here. When it's dark at night, the lights come on and I'm looking at his patients getting afraid and drilled and everything else. I saw a picture right there. I got it. And that's just one. I mean, it's. I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking right at it, which is not, it's not that appetizing.
Okay.
Isn't that app? No, I'm I'm asking now. I'm just saying. I'm not going to tell you how to decorate the inside of your.
Well, Dave, they have they have.
But I got to live like a hermit. I don't want to do that.
They have downward facing lights that we could probably require him to do.
Yeah.
Keep the light out of your house. It's it's they shine down straight down directly.
It's it's like if you were standing outside of these, well, you can't see him, Pete. But if somebody was standing outside these windows, they'd see everything gray here, but you can't see anything out of there. You know, but here we are. We've got our lights on. We live in the back of our house. That's where we live. Our dining, our dens back there, our TVs back there, our kitchens back there.
Planning board does have its discretion. Because it's back amending the special permit.
Mm hmm.
We do have the discretion to make. Additional um requirements.
Mm hmm.
So certainly we could. I'm not saying we're going to, but certainly. You know, we could do something about this. We can, we don't have it in our discretion to make him power washes. The back of or put up shade.
I just asked, please.
But certainly, we do have the discretion to be able to do that.
Okay, um, so I like option one.
Sure, my name is.
I like I like option one. Option one sounds like the smartest one. The third option, you can have all that ground cover where leaves are going to get into it. Very difficult to clean. But so long as they mulch and and the biggest thing is not with that stuff start cropping up again, because once it does, it's so it's so.
It looks awful.
But the only way they could do it was what they did. And if you guys have to suffer with a little bit of, listen, we're looking at Maple Street too, and we're hearing it. We never used to hear it. We never used to see it, but there it is now. I mean, I and and I I never knew how many ambulances go by up on Maple Street. There's got to be twenty a day. And usually they're pulling into the new nursing home too. Which has that giant, that's a, you guys will be hearing about that, that giant fluorescent sign that is on all night long and shines right in our back window. That's a whole nother thing we end up later. But uh, I just want to, and on one hand, I really want to commend you for the money you spend and the work you've done. Hi Glenn, I haven't seen you since high school. And uh. High school.
Yeah.
And uh, but thank you. Appreciate what you've done. He told me he was going to do it, but I guess you guys are on vacation. But I I only heard two days before and I'm like, well, it's going to get done. It's got to get done. Might as well pull the tooth now because he just can't. I didn't, I actually didn't think about that.
Oh, you set it up.
I really didn't. I didn't.
Thank you.
You know, then hang around and wait for a disaster to happen because with the storm, trees would have come down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I, anyone else would like to be here on this matter?
Quick question, are we allowed to? Add it to the record or?
Yeah, they're in my cell phone. And and you can really tell. I mean, I didn't date them. I didn't put timestamps on it, but you can just tell like, I mean, there's an, I have a new stockade fence as opposed to my old stockade fence because I got eaten by all the vines and everything and. All that stuff for here.
Thank you very much.
So as well, I appreciate it. I just assign it. Yes, so.
Is there anyone in the on it? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to be heard on this matter? So hearing none. What's the pleasure of the board? Do we? Do we want to close the public hearing? Do we? Do we want to see additional landscaping plans? Come back before. Board.
Revision to that.
So let's.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see additionally. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Pete.
No, it's hard to talk with this thing. I'd like to see additional landscaping plans that included all green giants. And with the people that are set down on fairway, I think a fence on that side would make a great difference. And in three or four years, those things are going to be huge. They won't see anymore of what's going on. It's my own personal thought on it.
Other thoughts?
I kind of agree with Pete. I'd like to see something additional as well.
Yeah. Can I ask, are you the all season? I do, listen.
Yes.
Can um, is staggering the arborvities that provides more cover, right?
Not necessarily. I think in this case, doing them in a linear form and then trimming them down the road is going to be the best option. Whereas now if we stagger them, I guess dependent on spacing, but then we could have issues of. In the future, them growing into each other, I think. Linear is a better option. In my opinion.
One thing to add, please.
Well, the 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 hearing is closed, but I'll say one thing. Go ahead.
Just one thing, and it's, you know, I don't like this. It was, it was mentioned before about the uh, on a commercial property.
I didn't close the public hearing.
Commercial, yeah. If there's a, if there's a dumpster. That's visible to everybody. It would be nice if there was some kind of enclosure around it, just so we don't, we're not staring at a dumpster out in the parking lot.
They're supposed to be.
That's what I thought. And now that we're all really looking at it. That's the only thing I've forgotten to say.
Oh, thank you. Did you, did you want to add something?
I was just going to ask about the sound barrier. If uh, there's a difference between the staggering of the arborvities or linear. Does it make a difference?
You addressed the sound issue versus linear versus staggered.
No comment. My comments would only be. I think.
Well, you 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 came in with the petitioner, so you must have an opinion because you put a plan down.
I don't think either way it will make that big of a difference. I think in the future, the again, the linear. Potentially would block more sound.
Okay.
I could tell you planted planted five feet on center. In three years, they'll be completely grown together.
Yeah, they will.
At least five or six feet up.
Yeah.
And that was my thought with the staggering is if you if you do them like a zigzag, most site plans I've seen are doing them in a zigzag like this. So they'll grow. Here and they fill in more.
Yeah, they will fill in.
Instead of just growing a line, growing a wall, it staggers it a little and gives it a little more character. So I. I mean, a thought.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, I would like to give you some comments. Uh, Mr. Belbeck, you were great in story and you described the situation that Mr. Doris was facing. Want the neighbors to know. We're listening. We're all ears. We don't, we don't want any issues. Uh, as Dave stated, we had a kind of hurricane task of what was going on there. It's not good now, but. For example, if we were given a approval. By the end of January, you know, we'd be done. So this can be remedied swiftly. There's some other issues uh we're happy to attend to, whether they're part of this or separate. Issues dumpster with downward lighting uh with a fence. We have been in discussions with the town that we were told that they were told for us about that. So we get approval.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so you know, what I've heard is. It's just what I what I believe I've heard for certain remedies that could be done now. While we await the potential for a new landscape. Design. Is, you know, doing something about the lighting, so it's not. Blaring into the neighbor's yard. So we, you know, we just did a. I don't know, two hundred thousand square foot storage facility and all the lighting has to go down and not out. You know, we would ask that you consider to do that now. So you're reducing the glare and and the lighting going in, you know, into the neighbors. We would ask that you seriously consider doing something with a dumpster, doing an enclosure. I sit on the board of Brownstone Gardens, which is elder housing here in town. Every dumpster, you know, is enclosed, locked, you know, it's it's safe for the residents. It's. The animals aren't getting in. I mean, the whole bit. I I would hope that you would consider doing that now.
Absolutely.
I I didn't want to skip you, so go ahead.
Um, my request, I'm sorry if it's redundant, that when uh more landscaping plans are submitted, um, language, um, maybe about like the mulching. As Mr. Delucchio had mentioned, to keep like. Property line versus up by the parking lot. Certainly up by the parking lot would provide.
So so we're not going to close, so I'd recommend that we not close public hearing.
Correct.
No.
That we ask the petitioner to come back with a different landscaping plan based upon everything that you've heard. Including the backside. Because you got those little stumpy uh. You know, uh. Arborvities.
Emerald greens.
That might make a quick fix for for the people that are getting the headlights from the back of their house at night because of the lack of daylight savings thing. Perhaps Dr. Doris could ask his employees to back their part of them instead of pull their part of them. So.
Good point.
They're pointing at his office and not at their house. I mean, that would at least. Eliminate the headlights. If I can see it in my. To a window, all these headlights, it's like, yeah, man, you get lit up as soon as somebody gets in their car to leave.
Good point, good point. So so I guess the the general feeling from the board. New landscape based on not based on number one. Doing work in the back. Um.
Closing the dumpster.
Closing the dumpster, changing the lighting. Um. But we can't approve the amendment. Without seeing the new landscaping plan. The, you know, the lighting and the uh, I mean, we could potentially make that a condition, the lighting and the. And the dumpster, you know, we would hope that you would just take care of it and then we could put it into the condition. Once we approve it, but I think we're all kind of moving toward. Resolving a number of issues.
The lighting, the dumpster, those are not issues.
Yeah, so you could probably do them right away. But you know, in the end, we'd probably still put them in a condition. So.
Yeah.
Down the road, five years from now, if it's ever an issue, we can point back to that. So, but we appreciate that. Just a good faith, you know, for the neighbors that you try to resolve those things right now. So for. The landscaper who did the plan. So uh, our next meeting. Is why I guess the timing on all of this is my next question. So. Is the planting season over? And if it is, when does it make sense to do the planting? For all of this?
Fall is the best time to plant trees. There's the most success.
Okay.
Okay. Following up on that, it's very mild for now. We could plant it now. But who knows what's going to happen a week and a half, two weeks down the road. I think realistically. It's March, April. And at this point, just clean up what's left there, uh, grade that area out and put an erosion control down to make it through the winter.
Correct.
I think that would be a realistic plan.
Okay. You know, I'm I'm concerned about the backyards. So as it gets warmer in the spring. That this is done by then. You know, to give you um, some help on that situation. So. So um. How's the board feel about trying to get this in? On our nineteenth meeting of January?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, thank you, sixteen.
Yeah.
We'll act on it, try to act on it first before the warehouse.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
That's what I have to do.
Yeah, we can do that. Okay, yeah, yeah. So we'll just take a second.
But we just get to the sixth. Get to February sixth. If we need to.
Question, uh, a landscaper's got a vacation plan.
Yeah. Huh?
Fifteen percent by Zoom.
No, you can do it by Zoom as long as we have stuff to look at.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have a board member on Zoom, so that's that's not a problem. So. Okay, so what we're going to do, uh, if everyone's okay, we'll have a motion to adjourn this to. January sixteenth at six P M.
Continue it.
Continue it, yeah.
All right, I move to continue the public hearing to Tuesday, June sixteenth at, or January, I'm sorry. January sixteen, twenty twenty four at six P M. Here in the Pleasant View Senior Center.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none by roll call for the continuation. Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Fonseca.
Aye.
Sheriff Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Terrell.
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you, everyone.
I just wanted to note that our department's uh business card is on that table as well for any pictures that you want submitted to the record.
Good.
Good to be submitted.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
So uh, my agenda. Okay. You two have report.
I do have a couple items. Um, I was gonna. Um, introduce Rebecca Lucy, our new deputy town manager, who is going to be the new point of contact for uh this board. Um, and with that, I had two items. Um, the first is that I sent out an email today. The Long Meadow Planning Board has invited the Eastside Meadow Planning Board to join them in a training session regarding site plan review. There's a poll sent out for um your dates of availability and whether you prefer hybrid or in person. So if you could please complete that poll um as soon as possible, that would be great. Um, and uh, just an update on the next agenda, which is January second. The only item currently is the continuation of the backyard hens by law.
Yeah, so speaking of the chicken uh bylaw, um. Or the rooster or the AFC chicken thing. So. This guy, it's eight twenty. I'm having a little fun here. So I believe I heard. That there's a proposal for a right to farm. Bylaw or general bylaw, which.
The agenda.
Okay. Okay. It's all I need to know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other further business?
Annual report. I don't know if it requires a motion to approve, but.
I read it and I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I generally think that we do approve, we should approve these just to get it into the minutes.
Okay.
Right, if everybody's okay with that.